fluctuate. Some people have the ability to get to where they need to go and many others don't. So I hope that the county will hear what we have to say and give us all due consideration so that we can maximize the resources that we do have and may have in the future in South Los Angeles.
Giving a little background on healthcare in Los Angeles, District Four Councilmember Tom Labange supports the idea of a city executive officer for healthcare.
In 1952, we had a health department and we consolidated with the county somewhere in the early 50s. We used to run city hospitals up until the 1970s. City Hall South was originally built as the health building for the city of Los Angeles. This is so important to look at it. And also, if Mr. Miller is here, Mr. Miller is talking to Mr., I won't say who, on an issue, Mr. Miller, we're talking about the health department. What are other cities? Long Beach and Pasadena have their own health departments. How are they functioning? How do they operate? What's their relationship with the county? And I would strongly support an executive officer, I don't know if it would be a surgeon general, but someone region-wide for all of the county of Los Angeles because disease knows those boundaries. And it would be good to look at it from a regional approach. And do other cities in the country have an executive officer? And Mr. Parks, will you look at an elected position possibly created just like a sheriff, which is so important? That would be the one person and maybe they'd have to be, like the DA has to be a lawyer. The sheriff would have to be a, he or she would have to be a doctor or in the medical profession, whether it's in something, but broad in that so that they know it. But if you just could look at that, maybe have staff look at that. And also, Ms. Hahn sometime called for a liaison officer for this. I know you probably had it on the tip of your tongue and I beat you to it, but as committee chair, I'm a little stucked at why it's not up. So if you could find that for, I appreciate it. Mr. Miller, Mr. President, I turn the microphone back to you. Thank you.
Although the county is responsible for healthcare to the people who live in Los Angeles, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn believes the city should always be at the table when healthcare decisions are made. And she also insists that we must not rest until Martin Luther King Hospital is reopened.
It's unfortunate that all we can do in the city of Los Angeles is urge the county to have a complete overall of their healthcare system. But that's the way government works. The county is responsible for providing healthcare to the people who live in the county of Los Angeles. We, on the other hand, can only urge, cajole, cry about the lack of healthcare to many people. But I love the idea of having maybe a countywide health officer elected by the people who could really be accountable to the people for providing healthcare in the county of Los Angeles. I also would like to urge us to move forward on the idea that the city have a healthcare officer liaison so that we can always be at the table when the county is making decisions about healthcare. Because just because they provide the service doesn't mean that our constituents aren't affected. And I will say today, it still troubles me greatly that the people that I serve in the community of Watts do not have access to a full-service hospital. And I will tell you, last Thursday night, when I was among those who were seated at the very historic moment for this country, when Barack Obama accepted his party's nomination, it was also the 45th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. And I thought to myself sitting there, what a shame, what a crying shame, that all these years later, the people of South Los Angeles do not have access to what should be a basic right, not a privilege, a basic right, to have access to a hospital that has an emergency room, has a trauma center, has all the services that a person will need from the time they're born to the time they die. And that is not the case right here in Los Angeles. And of all the parts of this motion, Mr. Parks, that you call for, there is nothing as important as reopening the Martin Luther King Jr. Hospital as a full-service quality healthcare facility for the people in South Los Angeles. And I know for a fact, those that I have been elected to represent in Watts are very disenfranchised now from something as basic as receiving quality healthcare for themselves and their families. We must not rest until that hospital is reopened as it once was, which was a fine hospital in the center of Los Angeles that provided quality healthcare. So thank you for bringing this up. Hopefully someday we'll be able to do more than just urge, but we will be at the table to help make the appropriate decisions about the county's ability to deliver healthcare to all of our constituents.
Thank you. Let's go ahead with that and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending September 5th, 2008. On behalf of Roberto Campos and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
You know, there's a saying that goes something like, you can give a man a fish and feed him for a day, or you can teach an individual how to fish and that individual can take care of themselves for the rest of their life. That's what Youth Build is all about.
One of the reasons we're honoring these, this great program today is because we've got these young people who are graduating from the WLCAC's Youth Build Program, which was founded by HUD. And we have here Jim Smith.
My name is James Philip Smith. I'm the president of Youth Employment Solution and the program consultant for the Youth Build Program for the Watts Labor Community Action Committee. Some of the successes that I've been able to see here in the South Central community running the Youth Build Program has basically been seeing young people who had no skills, who have no high school diploma. When they come to us, their heads are down and their pants are down and they're sagging and they don't have hope. But we know after nine to 15 months, it's all about sustainability, empowerment, and going to work.
Youth Build, it's not only about construction. We have Leadership Fridays, we have manners, we pull up our pants, we say no to drugs, we do it all.
Youth Build is a great program. I mean, I've been in it for the whole nine months. So, I mean, it's helped me out a lot, though. I mean, it helped me get off the streets. I was out there doing certain stuff, but since I've been in Youth Build, it helped me to learn construction, get my GED, and helped me to move forward.
I was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and I was raised in the Easton Shore, Maryland, on the seaside of Bellevue, Maryland, so I know about the waterfront. Little did I know, in 1978, I would be arriving in California, in '89, I'd be working for a man named Tom Bradley. And I've been working in the city system, as part of the city system, through Mayor Jimmy Hahn, through Mayor Richard Ritten, and now I'm happy to say I'm very actively involved with Mayor Antonio Villarreal. I know I'm a servant. I don't question that. I've been serving since I've been here, and I know that my mission and my calling is to help somebody. When I'm retired, you can say, "Jim Smith passed here." And you can go into Brandon Milken Center and say, "Jim Smith was here." You can go at 80th and Crenshaw at the Harry Meyer Center, where there wasn't a therapeutic swimming pool for disabled kids, and you can say, "Jim Smith passed here." Or you can go around the community and say, when you come into a young person driving a new car, you can say, "Thanks to Mr. Smith. You know, I got a house and I got a car and I got a job." And there are a lot of young people that are now young adults in this community that know that they have passed through the Jim Smith Youth Employment Solution Systems. The need of gang violence, the need of young gang members being recruited in the gangs means that they're the need for an alternative. So I see Youth Build as being that alternative. Because like the gangs are growing, Youth Build should be going. And let every young person know that they don't need a gang, they need Youth Build. That they don't need unemployment, they need a job. They don't need to go fishing, they need to learn how to fish. And that they don't need anything but to know that they have an opportunity, a way, and Youth Build is the way. Mr. Smith's dream is simple. Mr. Smith's dream is pure. It's to make a way for every young person who feel like there's not a way. If Martin Luther King had a dream and I have a dream, then I maintain every young person should have a dream, and that dream should be fulfilled. L.A. is the city of hope. L.A. is the city of opportunity. L.A. is the way. All you have to do is come this way and enjoy all that L.A. has to offer. If you have a young adult who doesn't know which way to go, they need Youth Build. They need to call (213) 473-3607. They need to call (213) 473-3607. I am James Philip Smith, the face of L.A.
Your city, your channel.
right away. We'll begin shortly. Wednesday, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., save for the first Friday of the month when we move to Van Nuys City Hall. Welcome, members of the public that have joined us and our city staff, as well as folks that are watching on Channel 35. We're broadcast live every meeting and rebroadcast each evening. We welcome our viewers as well. We're also available online where you can watch the council meetings via webcast at lacity.org. Just click on the links on the left-hand of the page, and you can not only catch the live meetings, but any of our archived footage of past council meetings. And lastly, you can use your telephone by calling (213) 621-CITY to listen to any of the council meetings or any of our committee proceedings as well. Our agendas are available online at lacity.org. They're also available here in council chambers. They're posted on the side in the back and also in our city clerk's office. Those are available 72 hours in advance pursuant to the Brown Act, also 24 hours in advance for special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any of those items today, please fill out a speaker card in the back, hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'd be more than happy to hear your comments on any of the items that have not yet received a public hearing in committee. All items receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council, and if it's not been in committee, a card triggers that hearing to be opened. If you have any items of a general nature that are under the jurisdiction of the city, those can be best articulated during general public comment, which we listen to generally at the beginning of the meetings, and that's two minutes per speaker. Just fill out a speaker card, again, hand it to the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be happy to hear your comments. We have a quorum, so Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alakon Cardenas, Grohan, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosen, Nelson, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zain, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Let me start the meeting by wishing our colleague, Mr. Weezer, a very happy birthday today. I understand it's his birthday. Congratulations. It's your 39th, right?
So I'm no longer a...
The big 4-0. Congratulations. You're in your, you're in your early decade now, again, instead of your late decade. So congratulations and a very happy birthday to you. If we can run through the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Weston seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zain moves, Mr. Cardenas seconds without objection. If we can run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. Its appeals or objections relative to the proposed 2007-2008 weed and brush abatement assessment.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? We do not have a card on that. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next item is item number two, and the recommendation for council action on that item is to open the hearing and continue the hearing and the ordinance to be presented on October 1st.
Okay. Any objection to opening that hearing, continuing the ordinance to the first? If not, so ordered. Next item, please.
Next items are building and safety items, and, Mr. President, item number three, that matter, there's a request to continue that to October 15th.
Okay. Any objection to continuing three to the 15th of October? Seeing none, we'll continue that. That leaves us with four through nine.
And four through eight, the department is recommending that council confirm those liens.
Okay. We will move the departmental recommendation. If nobody wishes to be heard, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, is also building and safety lien, and I understand on that item, there's an amendment by Mr. Weston to change the lien to $2,500, and also to receive and file this matter inasmuch as the lien has been paid.
All right. Without objection, we will take Mr. Weston's amendment for 20, to make that $2,500 for the lien, and I'll move to receive and file. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 19, and committee reports have been submitted on 13 and 14.
Ms. Grohl? 10, Ms. Grohl. Mr. Weezer?
12, please.
12 for the birthday boy. Mr. Labange?
They got him.
They got him, all right. Mr. Reyes? Is he up? Okay. Ms. Hahn?
Special.
11 for Ms. Hahn. If there's no others, that leaves us...
What about it?
What about it, Mr. Labange? Would you like it special? All right.
And also, Mr. President, on number 19, that should also be taken together with item number 35, which is on the special meeting. They are related.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk. That leaves us 13 through 17. If we can open the roll on that balance, and we'll move the reports on 13 and 14, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, those are before us. Do we have cards from the public on those?
You know, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I didn't get all the cards that have been submitted on that.
I will run through the box here. Let's see what we got. We have, looks like, 20, 21, 23. Do we have any others?
23.
25.
You asked at us.
27. These are just cards from the public. 33. All right, we'll call those special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Any specials from these items? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Congressman. I believe I heard you mention 25.
25, yeah. We'll call it special for you as well.
I have a 25H as a substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Gotcha. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. We have the item 34 next, is that correct?
Yes, and that's the closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk.
And it's not quite 10:15.
Okay. So we will wait to consolidate items 19, 35, and to take up the special meeting for one more minute. In the meantime, we can move to general public comment, and we will take our first speaker, Zuma Dogg. After that is Olga Hall. Good morning, Mr. Dogg.
Yes, good morning, City of Los Angeles City Council. We do have a great day today because we have so many great public access speakers, activists in the city, Olga Hall, Dan Wright, Jose Aguilar. So please tune in. People like to tune in for me, but today we have chock full of all-star activists here. And I also would like to tell, for the record, that the Friday council meeting at Van Nuys, there was no public comment, there was no quorum during the public comment, so it was an unlawful meeting. City Attorney, please have them reconsider. All items? I got off the phone this morning with Althea Shaw, Jamil Shaw Sr. and Althea. They're in Washington, D.C. City Council, and there's a big convention, media convention. There's radio, TV, Lou Dobbs, and they are making the rounds, talking about L.A. City Council and Jamil's Law, jamilslaw.com. And they heard, they called me, they were very concerned. They heard what happened here yesterday in council chambers. In case you didn't tune in, Zuma Dogg wanted to endorse Councilmember Bernard Parks for Board of County Supervisors because I felt it's very, very, very important to the city that this man become the next Board of County Supervisors. And they told me that, gee, that's not under the jurisdiction, even though all council members have a vote in this election for the Board of County Supervisors to elect Parks. And council members endorse candidates as their elected position on things like flyers and mailers, that that is not city business. Well, they, then they told me I had to leave for the day over that. Okay? They would not let me back in here. Not just, you know, you have to sit down for the comment, they had to leave for the day. Now, you had Candido Mares on this podium, dragged away by the police. He refused to leave. They asked him to leave. The police had to drag him out of here, and he was allowed to walk right back in. Why wasn't Zuma Dogg allowed to walk right back in? Because there's something that the city attorney calls discretion. Discretion. I call it censorship. I call it a threat to the First Amendment. I call it the city under attack. I say, we got a problem with your discretion.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the expulsion was for conduct, not content, as we discussed. Ms. Hall is next. After that, we'll have Ann Waldem.
Good morning, members of the council and Mr. President.
Good morning.
The name Autry is a well-known name. To many, it brings sweet memories of Gene Autry, the cowboy singer and actor who conquered the hearts of many children, women, and men with his songs and movies. We have to be very clear when we speak of Autry, we are not talking about Gene Autry. We are speaking of Mrs. Jackie Autry, who has been and is behind the scenes orchestrating her agenda. The Southwest Museum Coalition will bring to Mrs. Jackie Autry's museum world recognition. Her museum will increase in prestige and credibility and will bring a lot... Her museum will increase in prestige and credibility and will bring a larger attendance. The collection will allow Mrs. Jackie Autry to tap in Navy American Government Grants. The building and the land of the Southwest Museum, she can sell, sell it or dispose of it. As a matter of fact, we have discovered there is a backroom deal between Autry and LA CCD. For the November ballot, they want to get $12 million to convert the Southwest Museum into classrooms, and we taxpayers will be paying for it. In the meantime, Mrs. Autry will ignore the promises in the merger and walk away with the Southwest Museum collection, a fortune that does not belongs to her. I trust this board will have the courage to protect the Southwest Museum and save it. This is our first museum in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ann Walnam, and after that is Heinrich Kaefer. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ann Walnam, 755 Crane Boulevard, Los Angeles 965. I live one-half mile above Southwest Museum. I am the co-founder of the Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition. I wish to speak... Thank you. I wish to speak about the numbers, Autry's numbers. In 1986, the Autry Museum was approved by the Board of, excuse me, Referred Powers against public sentiment of 112 letters against two for, 1.7% approval. In 2006, there were 724 responses to a series of city human relations commission's meetings. Out of 724 responses, only 16 opposed our coalition position of retaining a full museum on Mount Washington, 2%. Two months later, Autry adopted the 2% position in presenting the community center two exhibition room plan. Two rooms do not a museum make. In 2007, Councilman Weezer listened to 50 leaders of 50 Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition organizations. All but three supported our plan. Those three spoke without authorization of their memberships, 6%. Also, in 2007, the mayor and councilman Weezer co-opted the original Southwest Museum name, Southwest Society, to embrace the community center two-room exhibition plan. You've heard of the Southwest Society, a plan to allow the Southwest Museum to die. If the 3% plan prevails, shame on Los Angeles for killing its first museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walnam. Our next speaker is Heinrich Kaefer. After that will be Dr. Stanley Moore.
Thank you. My name is Heinrich Kaefer. I'm a 30-year resident of the Highland Park area. I reside at 530 North Avenue, 53 in Highland Park. My council representative is Ed Reyes. I have a business in Jose Weezer's district. I'm here to also support the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, and I guess I want to start with, there's a fire out in the rotunda. No, no, let's make that, the Coliseum is burning down, the convention center. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, we have a museum in our community that is slipping away from us. Through the works of lobbyists and attorneys, they have come in, they have smoozed various council members who wish to paint a picture in Griffith Park of a museum that they can bring there that will take away from the residents of the northeast. So again, this is all about an asset, a resource in your community that is slipping away. And I know right now we're in a movement to save Griffith Park, we're in a movement to keep Griffith Park, as is the case with the Central Park in New York and various other parks around the community. We need to take a serious look at what's happening to our city. So again, I would encourage you to take a good look at the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition website, do the research, let's get the facts, let's bring them on the table, and let's make some of the right decisions. Thank you.
Dr. Stanley Moore is our next speaker. After that is Katrina Sims.
Good morning, members of the city council. I'm Dr. Stanley Moore. I taught for 43 years at the university level, and now, quote-unquote, retired. I am the vice president of the Highland Park Neighborhood Council, who is unanimously supporting retaining the Southwest Museum as a museum. I'm also on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, which has unanimously supported the same thing, Board of the Kiwanis Club, and they have also maintained the same thing. So I'm a very active local activist in our area of the 1st and the 14th council manic districts. The Autry is asking for six variances. I think that you ought to give them three additional variances. They estimate that they're worth, their 12 acres that are getting free from the city is worth at least $340,000 contribution to them. For that, they're supposed to pay $1 a year. They have, there's no record that they have ever paid that $1 a year, so I don't think you should even require it of them. Secondly, they are supposed to file an annual financial report since 1985. There has never been a single financial report ever filed that we have any record of with the city. So I don't think you should require that of them. And they're asking for a height limit of 67 feet there in Griffith Park Corner, and since they overbuilt on the last permit and ignored the whole limit of footage, we just think that you should give them no requirement for building their size, because they won't listen to it anyway. So those are the three additional variances they probably deserve to get, simply because they're not going to abide by them anyway. What we would like is to have a functioning Southwest Museum that is a museum. When the Southwest Museum was taken over by the Autry, it promised that, and all we're asking is that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moore. Our next speaker is Katrina Sims. Katrina Sims? Did I get that right? Yep.
Katrina.
Katrina, excuse me, Katrina.
Good morning. My name is Katrina Sims. I live at 4207 Camino Real in Mount Washington, and I represent the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and myself. When arriving in Mount Washington in 1989, I was very aware that the Southwest Museum was in need of restoration to preserve and properly exhibit the artifacts stored therein. I was relieved to learn that expert studies by architect Brenda Levin in 2004 showed that the museum could be restored and the facilities improved to bring the Southwest Museum to proper museum standards, and also include features that would attract an audience that could make it financially viable. On the existing parcel of land, which is private land, without any taxpayer expense to acquire more land, you can imagine my dismay when I learned that the Autry was planning to move the Southwest Museum and its treasures to Griffith Park, to public land at taxpayer expense. I understand that this is a very controversial issue, and I have confidence that the council members Tom Labange, Jose Weezer, and Ed Reyes can help guide the council to a compromise that protects the Southwest Museum and the taxpayers from this unnecessary loss, both financially and the neighborhood of Mount Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Our next speaker is Johnny Summers. After that is Jose Aguilar. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Johnny Summers, and I'm just your average constituent, and I come from the neighborhood of Highland Park. Being involved with the Southwest Museum, I have totally come to respect the history of my neighborhood, even though it is considered one of the poor neighborhoods. Recently, the LA Times wrote an article of middle-class people moving into Highland Park, thinking that in time it would move to Pasadena. With the change of the property value, they were forced to stay there. So what did they do? They band together, and within the schools, they changed, and they're doing Spanish and English program from kindergarten to the fifth grade, to where those children will all become bilingual. That's heart. That's what my neighborhood has, is heart. Watts and my neighborhood both had men who came in with a vision and no money. Watts gained the Watts Towers, Highland Park gave them the Southwest Museum. Charles Lummis was a visionary without funds, but he made things happen. That's my history in my neighborhood. That's what our children need to hear. In the United States of America, you don't have the money to make dreams come true. You need enthusiasm, you need trust in what you're doing, and you will find the right people to make that happen. We're becoming a country where everything is bought and purchased, and those who put their heart and soul in it are left behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms... We have next Jose Aguilar, and then Daniel Wright.
Hi, I would like to read for the record a petition letter from the Sierra Club that was addressed to the City of Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Commission. Subject, the Autry Museum Griffith Park Expansion. On January 27th, the Sierra Club Angeles Chapter passed a resolution to oppose the expansion of the Autry Museum in Griffith Park. The wording of the resolution reads, whereas the massive Griffith Park expansion proposed contained in the Autry National Center's draft environmental impact report dated August 07 represents an unacceptable elimination of Griffith Park open space and the expansion of park commercialization, increased traffic congestion of Western Heritage Way, exposure to additional air pollution from the adjacent freeways, disruption of plant and animal life, and small animal corridors, and the potential for fire, flood hazards, as demonstrated by the events of the past 12 months. Therefore, be it resolved that the Sierra Club oppose any expansion of the Autry Museum in Griffith Park. The Sierra Club Angeles Chapter resolution will serve to affirm the Sierra Club's policy against taking of public land for non-park purposes, which includes museums. Signed, Mrs. Marina Delioma, Chair of the Sierra Club Angeles Chapter Central Group. I got these letters for all the council people here. And let me say this, I'm speaking for myself now, I'm not speaking for nobody else, but if the Autry expands, I will move, I will do whatever my power, I would advocate for their removal by revoking their lease agreement. I'm not going to tolerate anymore, you've got all these high-density mixed-use commercial development projects flooding into the region, and you're sucking up open space. It ain't going to happen that way. We need to provide for our infrastructure, and park open space is part of that infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Wright. If you want to hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'll make sure we get those. We'll get somebody to you in just a second. Daniel Wright is our next speaker. Sure, we'll get to that for me, don't worry. Our next speaker is Daniel Wright, and then John Walsh will follow that. The camera seems to be stuck on Van Nuys, even though we are here in council chambers. So as soon as we get that switched back, we will hear your testimony. But hold on, we want to make sure people can see you.
Certainly.
All right, we have lost a video here for some technical reason. I don't know if folks can even hear me right now on Channel 35, but certainly inside the chambers you can. So we will try to get that fixed as possible. Apparently, ITA is on that. Why don't we continue with public comment right now, and we will try to get that fixed as soon as possible. Our apologies, Mr. Wright, go ahead. The audio is up, I'm told.
Shall I proceed?
The audio is up, I'm told, so at least we can hear.
Okay. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum, which is on the web at www.friendsofthesouthwestmuseum.com, or join the debate about this controversial issue at wwwblackhatblog.wordpress.com. Council members, in my past visits to public comment, I have reviewed and given you some evidence in the record before the city that every study that's been done of the economic feasibility of the Southwest Museum shows it can be proudly restored by the Autry to public service as a museum. You will soon be asked to consider the following question. Should the Southwest Museum be moved from private land owned by the Autry to taxpayer-owned parkland in Griffith Park for which this council acts as a trustee? Let me say that again in another way. Is it necessary to remove the Southwest Museum from its nationally significant and iconic home and build a replacement space on taxpayer land in Griffith Park? I have given you just a few facts and figures in my past appearances before this council that show that it is feasible to restore the Southwest Museum, and it is therefore not necessary to move it to Griffith Park. Today, I have been joined by other members of the Friends of the Southwest Museum. We have over 7,000 people who have signed petitions calling for this council to save the Southwest Museum from unnecessary loss. We remain confident that council members Labange, Weezer, and Reyes can help lead this council to a way to avoid the unnecessary loss of the Southwest Museum as an institution in this city. Please have your staff read the websites and materials delivered to your office to avoid the completely unnecessary loss of the Southwest Museum. Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Our apologies again. Mr. John Walsh is next. Good morning.
Everybody, if you can't see me and you're watching at home, call the complaint line. That's 213-473-7013, 473-7013. That's Eric's office. They seem to have everything for the developers but nothing for us. And if you can't see me, I'll describe what I look like. People often stop me in the street because they think I'm Tom Cruise. And then they say, well, not exactly Tom Cruise, you look a little younger than Tom Cruise. And actually, all the people got up before all look like celebrities too. I want to make a public apology to Mr. Parks. He did not kill a dare, someone else did. If I make a mistake here, I correct it, which is more than I can say for you. But I got bad news for you, Mr. Parks. Joel Sappell was the head of...
Mr. President, the speaker should direct his comments to the council as a whole.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, you can't see me, so you don't know whether I'm, who I'm looking at. This is called eye control. They control, my eyes are like here, they stop me, and I lose my time. In fact, Joel Sappell, who was head of investigations for LA Times, left recently. Did you know that? He took all his files with him. He took a file on you. He took a file on you, Mr. Garcetti, at the LA Times, and he gave the file, Mr. Sappell, to Margaret Lee Thomas. And there's a particularly juicy file on you, Mr. Garcetti, and the LA Times...
Mr. President, he is, by using the word "you," he is...
I'm telling you, this is...
Sir, if you could please, you can say whatever you want, but please address the...
They're getting scared now, because I'm talking about it. I'm trying to take my time.
Nobody's trying to stop you. We'll give you the time credit.
I just want you to know who Mr. Sappell works for now. He works for Zev Yaroslavsky. Zev Yaroslavsky is paying him $140,000. He negotiated that deal while he was at the LA Times. And I want to tell every member of the public, if you, and also whistleblowers, if you talk to the LA Times now, what you say will go to the LA Times, then to Joel Sappell, and you will be fired. If you talk to the LA Times and you are a whistleblower, you will be fired.
Like a few more seconds, sir?
Thanks. You know, I like sharing with you. Incidentally, if you go out to Hollywood, the crane up there has illegal signage on it. We have a 20-story crane in Hollywood and Vine, has a W sign in red on it.
Thank you, sir.
I've gone to the FAA. You go, you check. One of these days, someone's going to plow into that sign.
Rick Nightingale is our next speaker in Van Nuys.
In LA, they usually have signage on the crane.
Thank you, sir. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker in Van Nuys, where I know we do have a video link. Good morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. I talked about the budget, excuse me, yesterday and so forth, and I was told that the council got on it and they did their ballot, I mean, their budget. Oh, yeah, they really did, but the only problem is they cut off everything for the average person. I mean, you know, our tree services is cut back, our roads have cut back. I mean, there's an area in my, where I live, you can't even drive down because the roots are coming up through the street, but I was told, well, we, those are, it costs too much money right now, so we're resurfacing the other ones, so they won't go bad. But the only problem is, is that all the programs, I hate to say it, for the needy or the poor and so forth, they all go through with the city council. But the people that are backing those, like the average taxpayer, we're not getting what we're due. And I'd like, it's just really something, that the city council can do this and not do that. I realize people need things, but I go back to the same thing, is you gotta earn it or you don't appreciate it. you don't appreciate it. I was told that with my parents, and it's gone through my whole life, and it is absolutely true. If somebody keeps giving you something, then you are not going to appreciate it if you don't earn it. And they are not earning it. Because if that was the case, then all of the classes in the schools at night would be packed. They would be down there screaming at you that you have to go talk to the school board to open more classes so we can learn to turn around and improve ourselves. I improved myself when I was younger. I went to school at night so I could get a better job, because that's what it took. I didn't want to go to school, but I did. And they don't, so why should we have to support on our backs all the time? That means you're not doing their job as usual. And if you had quit the waiver fees, how much could you save to turn around and take care of these other bills? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker here in city council. And then we have Arnold Sachs.
Good morning, council members. Chuck Tenon. I asked council member Ed Reyes, what would be his one greatest passion for this city during his term, and he said to me, "Housing for everyone." Well, you know, one year ago, Herb Wesson's housing committee was instrumental in getting the LA Housing Department $5 million to save the Down Payment Purchase Assistance Program and save the dreams of many people on the waiting list. And now, the LAHD canceled the program because of lack of funds, and the LA Neighborhood Services lost their contract with the city for rehab housing programs to help people to make their house more livable. And you know what? That's really sad. One and a half years ago, 54 people lost their affordable housing in CD2 on Magnolia Boulevard. They were evicted to make way for a development program to be replaced by 12 affordable housing units. Yet the buildings are still there with decay and vermin and a failed construction loan there. That's really sad. The Magnolia Boulevard project is setting a precedence for this city in poor planning, the lack of sharp, skilled planning personnel. They know how to destroy a neighborhood, remove affordable housing, unsafe streets, poor storm drain control, and you know what? Sergio Valdez, a planner for the city, told me, "We must pass everything regardless. It's our job, and if we don't approve it, the city gets sued." Yet Gail Goldberg supports the old-fashioned way of neighborhoods there. And I might say that I thought of an interesting program that it presented to Bernard Parks, kids 8 to 15, "Take down, remove graffiti, and it'll take you fishing." Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenon. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Guillermo Reyes. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Council President. I'm reading from a editorial from the Daily Breeze dated 5/21/08. The LA Red Line, which covers 17.4 miles from Union Station to North Hollywood, took 14 years to complete and cost $5.2 billion. Comes out to about $300 million a mile. I'd like to just point out, because it's Metro time, half-cent sales tax discussion, the Murray bill, in case you didn't know, or in case you do know, introduced in 2003, called for a half-cent sales tax then, that was not acted on. It listed 19 projects, approximately $5 billion. You've heard a lot in the newspapers lately how the county board of supervisors, some of the members, some of the people say, "Well, it was backroom deals, the mayor did it." I don't believe the mayor was the mayor in 2000. Mayor Vera Gossett was in office in 2003. So whatever backroom deals, what was going on between the five years of the Murray bill sitting around collecting dust and the new Fuer bill that was introduced in 2008? Why don't you ask your county board of supervisors what exactly they did? I'd also like to point out that a couple other, the West Side Extension Corridor Study, there was notice that from Western to Pico was funded, a 2.3-mile part of the rail line, Western, Pico, San Vicente. That comes, based on $300,000 a mile, that comes to almost $700,000. Nothing was built. The 1980s study, 28 years they've been studying the West Side Extension. When do we get some results? It's like the Little Shop of Horrors. You know, if you're religious, and if you're not, just to update you, Moses traveled in the desert for 40 years. They've been studying the West Side Extension for 28 years. And finally, for the city attorney, "I, you, we, he, she, it, we, you, they." "You" is both singular and plural, in case you didn't realize that.
And you're right about the commuter express. My apologies. You're correct about the commuter express bus line. Guillermo Reyes is our next speaker, and after that was Joy Stillard. You want to hand that in? Yeah, we'll get a sergeant-at-arms to get that from you, no problem. And after that will be Joy Stillard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, city council. My name is Guillermo Reyes. I reside at 1507 Kemper Street, Cypress Park, member of the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council, and also Vice President of the Friends of Cypress Park Improvement Association. I'm here to let you guys know that we're in support of the Southwest Museum staying in our community. It's very important to our community here. You know, it's our only museum that the kids can at least walk to or get to through the MetroLink, through the Red Line, I mean. So in behalf of the two groups that I'm representing, we're here to let you know that we need the museum staying in our community, and hoping you guys will consider, everyone else that's spoken before has given you all the facts, I don't need to repeat them, but we're hoping that we can keep it where our kids can keep on going. I remember going through that tunnel, going up to the museum and hoping that my grandkids can keep on going there, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Appreciate your testimony. Our last speaker for general public comment is Joy Stillard. Good morning.
Yes, I'm here to talk about the Southwest Museum of the Archery National Center in Griffith Park. In the area surrounding it, parts of it are middle-class, parts of it are poor. And in those parts of poor, you see the methamphetamine being manufactured in the hills. You see the old gangsters selling drugs on the street. You also hear about the man who drove down a dead-end street and got killed, but he was a drug trafficker who flew planes, so even an outside gang came in and killed him. But you want to take away the Southwest Museum. You want it bare. You don't want economy in the area. We want economy in the area. The collection there is worth $1 billion. You don't think we deserve it? You don't think our small businesses can't grow? You want to take it away, or the archery does? I'll put it that way. You and the genectro sense. Well, they want to expand Griffith Park. I go through records. Those records were controversial back then. It even went to Board of Referred Powers to get approved. The city of LA is park poor. Why do you want expansion? Why is it park poor? Our forefathers gave Griffith Park. Other cities bought land. I repeat, they bought land. We will always be park poor historically. So let's get back to what's going on in the area. The Totem Pole was one of the collections at Southwest Museum. That came from my area, Lincoln Heights. Taken away from our area. The lions at the zoo came from Lincoln Heights. Taken away at our area. You take, you take, you take. This has got to stop. We need the, Griffith Park is a cultural, historical monument for your tourism. We need Southwest Museum for your tourism. Whether you know it or not, we're aligned with Pasadena in a lot of ways. Not only tourism, the Arroyo Parco scenic byway, biotech firms. USC is putting the Health Sciences Campus in my area. My methamphetamine hills will probably be housed with employees from USC eventually. Please retain our economy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That'll close our general public comment. We can now, if we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alacorn, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Huizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Garcia, 14 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first item, and if we can actually continue that item into the regular meeting and take that up together, and adjourn the special meeting, take 19 and 35 together. Is anybody wishes to call those special? If not, I've informed these cards are all for this project. I just want to read the names into the record. But if there's no opposition, they've indicated willingness to yield their time. Matt Roberts, Scott Birnout, Janice Dobbs, David Vanghaus, Lorraine Fesc, Vanessa Lula, Jeff Lulon, Amelia Corn, Michael Westerholt, Eric Andres, or Andres, Thomas Court, and Stamen Ben Basat, owner. That may be that you are an owner, but I want to make sure those are in the record. And if nobody wishes to speak, let's go ahead, open the roll. Yep.
Do we consider putting it on consent?
Yep, that's what we're doing right now. I was just reading it into the record. So we'll open the roll. On 1935 together, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That passes. Thank you very much. And thank you, the members of public who came down here for that item. If we can take the first item called special, please.
The first item called special, Mr. President, is item number 10, and that was called special by council member Grul.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. And I know we have lots on the agenda today, but this was one item that I wanted to make sure we highlighted. And this is an ordinance to prohibit smoking in farmers' markets. Yes, believe it or not, that has not happened before. And you can go to a farmer's market in your neighborhood and be walking next to where food is being served, or walking to where there is fresh, organic food, and people can be smoking next to that location. And if we could just, there's a lot of noise in the chambers.
Folks, if you don't mind, thank you so much for coming in. If we could move the conversation just out into the hallway, that would be great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We have worked hard with the city attorney and council member Huizar's office to strengthen the city's anti-smoking ordinances, and thereby reducing the spread of illnesses caused by secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke kills 38,000 non-smokers each year and causes an estimated 300,000 children under the age of 18 months to suffer lower respiratory tract infections, including bronchitis and pneumonia. It is our duty to help protect public health by limiting the exposure to city residents, particularly our children, to the dangers of secondhand smoke. And we have, I think, done a lot, city strides, the efforts of Ms. Perry in parks, and Mr. Weiss on beaches, in restaurants, and offices, and in playgrounds. And so I want to thank, we have representatives from the community who have been there every step of the way, and actually came to me and said, "We need to close this loophole for our farmers' markets in the city of Los Angeles." And so as a resident, as someone who goes to those farmers' markets, and as someone who grew up with a father that smoked, and sat in those cars, and felt that smoke, and understand the implications for that, and the ramifications of that, I would ask today that we have an eye vote to ban smoking in our farmers' markets all across the city of Los Angeles. I think this will be a model for the other cities, and I thank you for your eye vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Ms. Han.
Thank you. I'm obviously very much in support of this. I had mentioned during our committee that it's one place that you are assuming people are shopping at farmers' markets for a healthy lifestyle, for healthy choices. I mean, that's really why they're there. So to have people making the effort to make healthy choices at a farmer's market on what they're putting in their body, to have that place be a place where secondhand smoke is prevalent, and they're breathing that, just really goes against, I think, their goal in life, which is to be healthy. So I think this is the right next step for us to do as a city, and I support this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Ms. Grul, thank you very much, because there's nothing like fruit. Absolutely nothing like fruit, and nothing like a neighborhood farmer's market. And I know I've helped a lot of neighborhood farmers' market, as we all have, but, you know, there is a little sign there, I don't know who's Herb Wesson, I know you're the one there, but they don't allow any pets to come to a farmer's market. It's posted. It's self-policed. The same thing is true on issues related to fruit and vegetables, self-policed as it is there. So this could be done, it works well, and I think it's real important for a good, healthy lifestyle to continue this here. I call for my vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendahl, and you better top the bananas.
What'd you say?
You better top his bananas. He had bananas in hand while he was speaking. Go ahead, please.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about, bananas? I'd like the city attorney to come up on this. I have a problem with it, to be candid with you. My problem is, you know, I don't smoke. I used to smoke cigarettes, and I used to smoke in this and that, and all that, and on my 39th birthday, I quit smoking. And I had been smoking like a fiend, because it's bad for your health to smoke. But we don't let smoking here, there, everywhere, and this is just another, in my opinion, potential infringement on people's rights. However secondhand smoke, I don't want either. So I'd like to ask you a few questions. Would you tell us your name first?
David Schulman with the city attorney's office. I might begin by noting, I'm not sure locally grown bananas are available at city permitted farmers' markets, but it's just my thought.
I miss the banana story. All I can tell you is I love bananas, and I got banana trees, and when they come out, I'm thrilled to death. Okay, where have we banned smoking so far within the world that we've been in the last few years?
The city was one of the nation's leaders in first banning smoking on elevators and public buses in 1964.
Okay.
The city then required workplaces to create non-smoking areas in 1986. The city was one of the first in the country, and at that time, it was suggested that that would be unworkable. Instead, today, public opinion would say it's unthinkable to have any smoking in workplaces. Then, over the last few years, the city has been slowly prohibiting smoking in an increasing number of public places. This is all in accord with the grand public health strategy as follows. If the American people knew that tobacco was the poison it is today, 100 years ago, it would never have been legalized. Instead, we have a legal product that people need public assistance in getting the message. They have support for getting off of, just like you received support from your friends and peers. Every time a government agency restricts public smoking, it reinforces the will of more people to quit the habit.
No, I understand that. And frankly, as I was preparing myself for my 39th birthday, I knew that if I wanted to really take care of myself, I should stop smoking. And I motivated myself over a four-month period, and on my 39th birthday, I stopped smoking, and that's been it. Hallelujah for me personally, I'll be clear about that.
And that probably had a lot to do with peer pressure and support as well.
No, no, no. It was just purely, I took control over myself. Look, we know there's addictive elements in cigarettes, and people get addicted to that addictive element, whatever it is, the nicotine, or whatever we call it. It is a issue, and of course, it ends up in emergency rooms, hospitals, and people die of cancer. I mean, it's ridiculous to smoke. But saying that, we banned it now on the beaches? Have we banned it on the beaches?
The county has, and I believe, I'm not sure the city has control over any public beaches.
We banned it in our parks?
I don't recall.
The city did, and we did have some jurisdiction over some beaches.
Okay, so the bottom line is, if you're a smoker, this is another public outdoor location that they can no longer smoke in. What happens if they're walking down the street smoking a cigarette? We're going to get them on that, too?
Well, you know, Mr. Rosendahl, the public health strategy is to protect other people from the behavior.
Of course, secondhand smoke, sure, sure.
So to talk about banning in public areas is to require a discussion about protecting those who don't engage in this habit.
Sure. So what if Joe Schmo or Mary Smith go to the farmer's market and they got a cigarette? Will we arrest them? Will the cops do something? What will happen to that person if we ban smoking in those farmers' markets?
Well, the wonderful thing is, the city's leadership on another issue of public health is really helpful in understanding the answer to your question. When the city was the first jurisdiction in the world to prohibit AIDS discrimination, I was asked to head that unit, which I continued to head. We never had to take anybody to court to litigation. Why? Because what the city did was a signal to the public at large as to what was and was not appropriate behavior, and workplaces and restaurants began to self-regulate. That seems to be the case with banning smoking. I'm not aware of a single prosecution for anybody smoking on a city bus in quite some time, and we would expect the same self-regulation through peer pressure once the city enacts this ordinance as well.
But is there a penalty if you smoke at a farmer's market? If we passed this today, would you be fined? What are the legal implications if you were, you know, absent-mindedly, you're an addict to that cigarette, smoking... smoking in, in one of these public venues?
It would require first, somebody with authority to enforce the ban, and likely, long before any public official was required to act, others would say, "Hey, did you know that there's no smoking here?" And we know that most smokers, as soon as they know something is not prohibited, they put it out. But if it pushed was to come to shove, I believe that this is codified under the infraction powers of the city, and the city attorney has a wonderful dispute resolution program that this would likely be referred to. It would be very difficult to imagine that somebody wanted to push this to the limit, but if they did, we certainly have the iron fist within the velvet glove, and there is a penalty that could be enforced.
Would we put up signs that say smoking prohibited and give some people some warning like that?
That would be up to, uh, the agencies in the city. The city attorney certainly wouldn't do that, but that worked awfully well with prohibiting smoking in elevators, those cute little signs, section 4150.
We understand elevators, airplanes, anything where you're stuck in the room, obviously, is outrageous.
Mr. Rosendahl, if we were speaking 50 years ago, you couldn't say that. You could only say it's outrageous today because of the courage of legislators 40 years ago to make something that was thinkable unthinkable.
Well, because of the facts. We know how cancer comes. People get lung cancer from smoking. We know that.
We also know that...
So we have all that medical background. We get cancer from a lot of things, too.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
But that is one major issue. Thank you so much for sharing this all.
It was a pleasure.
Thank you. We have Ms. Gruel next on the queue.
Just to close, and Bill, I usually agree with you on a lot of things. On this one, if someone wants to smoke, a farmer's market is a half a block, a block. They can go to the other side of the street. Um, but we ban smoking in restaurants where people are eating and there's food, but we don't, until today, we haven't banned smoking next to people where they're eating food at a farmer's market or they're buying the fresh food. Um, and so I think this is, again, a, a very important position for us to take. It does seem antithetical that we're giving fresh food and trying to really say, "This is healthy for you," and at the same time allow smoking in those areas. Uh, and so this will be an important step for the city of Los Angeles to protect people who want to go to those farmer's markets in a smoke-free area to purchase healthy food for their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson, and then Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President and, and members. I rise to support this, this action. And I am the one member of the council who is addicted to nicotine. And what I can say to each and every one of you that are here is that in my dealings with the attempts to smoke, that tobacco is the most difficult drug on the planet to kick. It is more difficult than cocaine or crack. It is more difficult than heroin. Uh, it is, I agree with you. If we would have known 100-plus years ago, when, uh, back in Virginia and places like that, where they started, uh, the tobacco farms, they probably would not have done it. And even though I, I understand where Bill is coming from, where this is America, and individuals should be afforded the right to, to do what they want, this is not a, a communist country, I do think individuals like myself need to be sensitive to the health of others. So I have always supported, uh, anything that would keep secondhand smoke away from individuals that would not, uh, or act like, uh, people, if they see other people smoking, they think it's cool, they think it's okay. Unfortunately for me, I have four sons, or fortunately for me, three of the four have been able to not smoke. I have one that unfortunately followed in his father's footsteps. But there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about quitting. And I can remember once I did quit for almost a year. And then my sons were in a serious car accident, and next thing I know, I was asking a guy to give me Marlboro. So I know how difficult it is. So the people that we can catch in the beginning, I think, when you say there's, you know, the prevention is, is the better way to go, I think this is a good thing. Farmer's markets, as Wendy said, are small places, and, and, uh, I think that you could go a block or hide in your car and do something like that. I think individuals that do smoke have a responsibility to others. And I will say that I have finally, Mr. President, come up with a way in which I truly believe that I can quit smoking and quit forever. I will, in eight years, run for president of the United States and quit like Senator Obama did. But I, I truly support, uh, this bill, and I would hope that we would all vote for it.
All right. Thank you. Herb in 16. Uh, Mr. Smith.
Me and Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, let me ask a question. Do you have any idea what the social cost of, the public policy cost is to the American health system to take care of people that are dying from emphysema, lung cancer, and other smoking-related diseases that the public has to pay for, and, and the costs that we carry through social security benefits and other healthcare benefits?
I believe it's in the billions of dollars a year as calculated by University of California, San Francisco researchers.
And that's correct. And that's the bottom line here, folks, is the non-smoking public is forced to bear the burden of the smoking public and the cost of healthcare throughout this country. I watched my daughter's father-in-law, mother-in-law pass away last year from lung cancer, constant smoker. I'm watching her father-in-law sit in a room, he's now 98 pounds, less than 100 pounds, has oxygen on, mask all day long, dying from emphysema caused by constant chain smoking. And I see the devastating effects of a chosen disease. This is not a disease you get by accidental contact, although secondhand smoke is an accidental contact, but it's a disease you get because of a choice you made. And then there's the burden that the families bear and society bears. And I'm watching this man die. He has oxygen, and he sits there every day with an oxygen mask on and smoking, waiting to die. Uh, that is an unfortunate situation that I wish, as a country, we could resolve. But the way we can resolve it is by passing all the laws we can to restrict it, to get it out of our society as best we can. And we should confine it to the person's home and say, "That's where you can smoke." Any public place where it impacts any other person should be made illegal. And I can't wait to vote for this. I voted for any other smoking measure. I will gladly vote for this one and ask Mr. Labange to move my motion along, which also is in your committee, which is waiting to, which would resolve smoking outside the doors of restaurants, which we've pushed them outside, but the impact is the same on the non-smokers. And so I want to do everything I can to eliminate this tragic, uh, disease that comes on mankind because we can control it. Unlike a lot of diseases, we can control this and stop it, and we need to, as public policymakers, do everything we can to obliterate smoking from the United States of America and the face of the world, because it does nobody any good at all. So I'm very happy to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Members, also, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your statements, and all members for the statement. Thank you, Ms. Gruel, for your leadership here. Uh, you know, it's all kind of, we gotta remember Marvin Browdy. And I remember when I started working there, you could smoke in this room. Uh, you could smoke in this room. And, uh, and, and all that is history now, but as we move forward, there is a joining measure that Mr. Smith spoke of, uh, that I am going to be meeting with the various people for the restaurant industry, uh, because Mr. Smith has called for a total ban of smoking outside of facilities, restaurants. Uh, and we will discuss that, uh, and we will come back with a recommendation for the council as we move forward. But this particular one, we could all vote for. I don't want to do anything that would impact, and many of us do have restaurants that have created spaces outside of there for dining. I want to hear their input as we move forward. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. And that's the last speaker on the queue, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. We'll send that without objection forthwith. Thank you all very much. And from, Mr. Weisar has asked for out of order. If there's no objection, we'll move from cigarettes to calories. And with that, Mr. Weisar.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is another item that speaks to the health of our residents here in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, this item here is asking the city attorney to come back with an ordinance that will require chain restaurants with 15 or more outlets in the state to provide basic nutritional information on their menus. Uh, this item is similar to what the county did about a couple of weeks ago that will apply to unincorporated areas of the county. And right now, before the governor's desk, is a bill by our former colleague, Senator Alex Padilla, that will, if signed by the governor, apply throughout the state. Now, we've passed motions in this council supporting that bill, and hopefully, if we sign this bill, if we pass this motion today, will send a strong message to the governor that we support the bill before his desk and that hopefully he signs it. In the event that he does not sign it, the city of Los Angeles will be ready, within a month, to pass its own ordinance that will protect and support our, our residents and be informed about what they intake into their bodies. Now, ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot we can do to address the crisis we have in this country in terms of the obesity that we're seeing and the problems associated, the health problems associated with obesity such as diabetes, heart problems, and other items. This item, I believe, is a very good one because it basically provides the consumer with information and allows them to make the choice. Now, we know that people who consume more calories, they actually consume more calories eating out than they do eating in. One of the reasons is that they do not have the information available to them when they are eating out. When they go shopping, many of the products people buy have information in the label behind that product that informs the consumer what they are eating. Hopefully, this can also apply to the restaurants when they go out and eat. And studies have shown that when people are informed, they consume less calories. So hopefully, this would go a long way to address the obesity problem that we have throughout the country, and it would also send a strong message that if the state's not going to do it, the city is ready and willing to inform and educate its residents so that they can make more healthier choices when they go out and eat. I urge your eye vote on this item. Thank you.
Mr. Parks, then Mr. Garcetti, then Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think that every one of us agrees in the sense of dealing with, uh, the restaurant business, that we should have some ability to know what is the nutritional count. The one issue that I'm concerned on this legislation is that it is very restricted and only mandates it on the menu. Uh, there's another piece of legislation, and, and this is one of the reasons that it was vetoed in the prior session. There's another piece of legislation that the CLA has, uh, basically moved forward and, and recommended we support, is AB 2572 by Assemblyman Parra, which gives the restaurants the ability to put this on, uh, at a point of sale as a separate item to where you can have information as you purchase your, 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 your food. But to put it on the menu, and one of the things, a little research that we've done, we were told, and again, we've not gone back and vetted this, but we were told that depending on the seasonal nature of when crops or food or vegetables are picked or harvested, you could end up with a dramatically different nutritional content. So rather than having the restaurants having to redo their primary, uh, menu, to allow them to put it on a brochure or another document there at the point of sale with the same information appears far more reasonable, and I would ask that, uh, if we're going, uh, because I can't support this bill as is currently stated, because it's the very reason that the governor rejected it or vetoed it, but that we ask that it be amended to allow that flexibility for restaurant owners to place this information in a form separate from the menu but available to the public.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Weisar, and thanks for the comments, Mr. Parks as well. Uh, I know we were very proud last year to help out Mr. Padilla, who really took a risk in doing this, because there is opposition to doing this. Um, I know Mr. Labange is next on the queue, but if I can quote him before he speaks, that information is knowledge is power. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And, uh, by simply giving this information out there, I think we can all make better choices. It does not say you have to eat anything. It says this is what the consequences are. Sometimes we think things are healthier than they are. I love being able to read that nutritional information and making the right choices, and this just empowers people. It does not dictate anything. When, when Mr. Weisar and I introduced this last year, we were very hopeful. Um, and, uh, I think even though the, the governor vetoed this, Mr. Padilla stuck to it, put another SB 120 in this year, and it's really inspired the county to do what it's done. So we have power here locally to do something about this, but we really would like to see statewide standards, and I think this is a fight that's not worth fighting for the restaurant chains that can do this quite easily. We, I know that Mr. Padilla was very sensitive to putting in a time limit in here so that it could be worked in over time. It wasn't right away, that we had worked to make sure that this was done in a way that was, uh, that helped them. It's not a matter of decreasing business. I think restaurants are getting healthier because they know people want that, and the customer demand is driving that. With more information, they should be able to drive that. The restaurants can make as much money, if not more, of what they're making now, and also at the same time, give people healthy choices. I know Ms. Perry last year was the seconder for, for both of us, and what she has shown in South Los Angeles, too, shows a lot of, of courage. And what it shows is this council is willing to take those stands, uh, again, to give people the options of some leverage in communities where people aren't eating healthy. And we see those particularly in our lower-income communities and our communities of color, where obesity is a real epidemic. This will be a good step forward. So thank you, Mr. Weisar, and let's keep our fingers crossed that we'll get, uh, a better signature this year, and we'll look forward to implementing this here locally with Mr. Yaslove's lead. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange is over in Ms. Perry's seat.
Uh, Mr. Garcetti, for that. Information is knowledge is power is a axiom. We see what's on an agenda right here, what the issues are, what it is about, and I think it's real important, the same thing within a dining experience. And also, I think we're going to ask people, uh, in multiple languages, too, I hope, uh, that they give them an opportunity to understand what it is. Uh, because I think the time has come, uh, and I'm a daily walker. I walk this morning at 5:45. I called Ed Aberbrimiam at 847-2020 at 5:49 to report streetlights out, uh, because you could tell when it's dark when the lights are out. And the same thing, if you put the light on, what you're eating, you can tell what you're eating. There's the analogy, Janice Hahn, right there. So I thank you. It is an adjustment, and I hope, is anyone here from the industry today at all? Anybody here? Let's just do an instant poll. Do you favor information is knowledge is power, and what you want to eat, you should know it when you go into a restaurant? Raise your hand if you do. We got half the people are healthy in city council, so we're, uh, we're halfway there. I asked for an eye vote. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's okay with my colleagues. I'd like to open up the hearing, please. I think we have a, a few people from LUSD who would like to speak on this item.
Okay, with, if there's no objection, we have a number of cards on this. Our first speaker is John Walsh. After that is Reverend Vince Holmes from the Zion Temple Community Church.
I have to reluctantly, reluctantly agree with Chief Parks. No one reads signs on the walls. More bureaucracy, more inspectors, the head inspector to go out to fast-food restaurants and check to see if it's up there. And then what happens? They get a fine, and what happens to we who are eating at the restaurant? We pay more money. You know, there are several restaurants on Hollywood Boulevard that this would come under. Maybe you should be interested in the children sleeping in the gutter on those streets. Maybe you should be interested in the heroin dealing going on in Hollywood Boulevard. They shouldn't be, and if somebody, incidentally, I'm a real libertarian. If you want to be morbid obese, more power to you. If you want to commit suicide, right to death. We don't need more regulations when your inspectors on the serious issues simply are not doing their job. Come out. And, and incidentally, these, these signs are written, "You have to have a PhD in science to understand them." And last of all, the people who see those signs rationalize them. Well, I'll only order it one. I want evidence that one single sign in the world caused one ounce to come off somebody or one inch off their waist. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of money, more bureaucracy. Nothing works in LA, including the mayor's marriage.
Thank you. Uh, Reverend Vince Holmes is our next speaker. Good morning.
My name is Reverend Vince Holmes from Zion Temple Community Church. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I am in support of it. I recognize that, um, it may not be cost-effective to those who are restaurateurs, who are their owners. However, given consideration... However, given consideration to Councilman Parks' suggestion, I think diminishes the effect of the, of what the whole thing is about. While it does, it provides a more cost-effective measure for those who own the restaurants, however, it diminishes in that it seems, appears in his recommendation that it will allow for just signage to be posted in general areas or something separately handed to an individual group. I believe it's more effective when it's on the menu. It's a step in the right direction to improve the quality of life by providing informed choice of Los Angeles residents. It's also a small piece of improving the healthcare issues within the city. And I know that someone may be wondering, why is it a pastor is concerned about such an issue? It's because in my business or in my profession, I actually deal with the end results of overeating or people dying or families who are struck in with heart-related diseases, high blood pressure, and diabetes. And finally, I would like to say that it's preventative measures that would make a difference. And so I would ask that you would give consider, you give serious consideration to passing such an initiative as having the information available to those who are dining. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, excuse me, is it Helmy Kim? Or, sorry, Ms. Kim, I couldn't quite read the first name.
Good morning. My name is Hiley Kim.
Hiley, sorry.
Representing Community Health Councils. We are here in support of, okay, thank you. Again, my name is Hiley Kim. I'm here on behalf of Community Health Councils. We are here to support Councilmember Weezer's motion for mandatory menu labeling. By way of background, Community Health Councils is a nonprofit, public health advocacy, promotion, and policy organization. We've done a number of studies associated with our nutrition resource environment, and in South Los Angeles, we have an overabundance of fast-food restaurants that generally do not provide healthy food options. I would like to submit that study for the record. I think in addition, it is important to, the introduction of mandatory menu labeling recognizes the link between our environment, our food choices, and our health. Requiring nutritional information at the point of sale changes the environment under which the consumer currently makes decisions about the food they eat. Community Health Councils has supported the state legislation, Senate Bill 1420. We support the county's motion, and we support Councilmember Weezer's motion for mandatory menu labeling. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kim. I have a card with no name on it, it just says LAUSD Government Relations. There's somebody, and Andrea Giancoli as well, but what's your name, sir?
Good morning. My name is Julian Gorgoni. I'm a legislative advocate with LAUSD's Government Relations Office.
Sorry, Gorgoni?
G-O-R-G-O-N-I.
Got you. Thank you, Gorgoni.
And we're here in support of this motion. We want to commend Councilman Weezer for bringing this forward. We have taken a position in support of the statewide measure that Senator Padilla put forward, and we are urging the governor to sign it, and we submitted a letter to that effect. Simply put, what's being proposed is an ordinance and a measure that would focus on chain stores, on stores that can afford to make these changes to how they present their menus, and the purpose being empowerment, being information will allow people to make intelligent choices. What we like about this is that this is providing greater freedom to consumers. And when consumers have the information, they make better choices. Simple as that. We commend you for working on this issue. It's in line with LAUSD's pledge to put such information on our menus so that students at a young age can start creating the habits that will lead to health and will decrease obesity. And we know that that's good for them in terms of their quality of life, but it's also good in terms of addressing the healthcare crisis in terms of costs, quality of care, et cetera. Because the less obesity we have, the less taxed the system will be, the better we'll be able to provide services to people in LA and throughout the state, hopefully. So we want to again commend you, and we support this motion.
Thank you. Andrea Giancoli is our next speaker. Then after that is Zuma Dog.
Good morning. Again, my name is Andrea Giancoli, and I'm here on behalf of LAUSD Board Member Marlene Cantor. I'm the Nutrition Policy Coordinator for her. I am also a registered dietitian and a spokesperson for the American Dietetic Association. As Mr. Gorgoni stated, we fully support Councilman Weezer's proposed ordinance and also Senate Bill 1420. The board passed a motion to support 1420, and the reason that they support this particular bill over Para's bill, 2572, is that this bill, 1420, and also the proposed ordinance, will go much further to provide information to the consumer, to our students, to our families. The Para bill just essentially asks for brochures or just information to be available. A lot of that information, those types of brochures, are already available in some of these chain restaurants, et cetera, but they're not necessarily visible where people can see them, or are they picked up and used. This Padilla's bill and the proposed ordinance would require that this information would be visible to all that come into that particular restaurant so that all will be provided with the information to make an informed choice. And as a registered dietitian and a spokesperson for the American Dietetic Association, we believe that in order to be empowered to make a choice, you have to have the information. And if that information isn't there for you, who knows what choice you will make. Again, we know that there are a lot of calories, a lot of fat, et cetera, in a lot of these fast-food meals, but we don't really understand, the average person doesn't really understand the staggering amounts of calories and fat and saturated fat that are in many of these meals. So by giving them that information, that they will be informed and hopefully be able to make a healthier choice, because these restaurants do offer many healthier choices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zuma Dog?
Yeah, I had other things I was going to talk about, but this is important. You know, you can't mandate common sense. You can't mandate pride and dignity in your life, okay? They try to legislate common sense from the bench here. You know, first of all, you provide all this information. Do these people know how to interpret it? Then who's going to check to make sure that this information's correct? Are you going to have the menu police driving all over town? Okay? These chains meet customers' demands under free-market conditions, things like McDonald's offering salads. If this was information people wanted, well, then they would be offering it to them. Okay? This is an educational job, okay? Yes, LAUSD is very important. You need to teach and educate people healthy decisions, healthy choices. Why don't you just make a new thing here that says we're going to put signs on every street corner? Don't walk out in front of moving buses. You know, this is, so you said, oh, Councilmember Han, for the record, said it's a good idea. Exactly. So this is all just a bunch of socialist wacko kind of nuttiness, I think. I don't know. Maybe that's the wrong, you know, again, dignity, information. How about a, how about a media campaign? City council members, start doing what Zuma Dog does. Take out public access shows, go on YouTube, go on the radio, use City TV 35. You got the sources of the whole city, you got billboards. Education campaign, education campaign. Here's the thing with LA City Council, they always take a good idea. Of course, we should be having people understand nutrition and make better choices, but then they try to do this nutty stuff where they pass it into laws, and then the businesses are going to have to pay for this. Well, what about all the restaurants that aren't 15 or more? It's just nutty. It's just wacky. I could hear Doug McIntyre tomorrow on KABC already talking about it. And so, see, I've already used up into the minute, so if I walk away now, it's just a wasting time. So just to summarize here, Los Angeles City Council wants to mandate nutritional information on menus. I say that is not their territory. Have some dignity. Eat healthy.
Mr. Zion is our next speaker. That closes our public comment, and then Mr. Weezer.
Okay. Let me put my exercise coat on here. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, that's all the time you have.
Well, thank you very much. Jose, I want to congratulate you on this, and you've got young children that want to be healthy, and you want to make them healthy. I know when I grew up, we didn't have that information. When I go to a store to buy something now, I look at the calorie count. Mr. Walsh, who's a teacher in L Unified, Mr. Zuma Dog, and all these other folks say this may not be a good idea. It is a good idea. It's a good idea because when you're sitting there in that restaurant, are you going to have this dressing or that dressing? You're going to have the chicken sandwich, or you're going to have the hamburger. You have the turkey, or you're going to have something else. When you have that right in front of you, it's going to help inform you. We talk about obesity, diabetes, and all these issues that affect our society and the cost to society. Why not have that information on that menu to see exactly what you're getting? You're going to get yogurt, you're going to get ice cream, you're going to get the dressing on it or not. So I think it's a great idea. I commend you for it. If they want to criticize us, we're just trying to help people understand. You can have the manual at home, but when you're sitting there making that order, that's when you want to know exactly the calorie count. And you may look at it and say, I'm going to have the turkey instead of this, or I'm going to have the tuna fish instead of that. I mean, that's what I do when I know the difference in the calorie count. So I commend you for it. People are going to criticize maybe because they don't think it's a good idea, but we have a responsibility to help educate people as well as keeping them healthy. So congratulations. The criticism is unwarranted. Congratulations in order. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President Garcetti as well, for being an ardent supporter of this item last year when we both introduced a motion to support the bill that was not signed by the governor last year. And just as Mr. Zion and Mr. Smith brought up in terms of the smoking earlier, the farmer's markets, this is not only a quality of life issue, it's also an economic one. Let me give you one statistic that is pretty startling. Between 1987 and 2001, the rising obesity rate and associated medical conditions accounted for more than a quarter of the growth in healthcare spending in the United States. A lot more needs to be done to address the obesity issue, and this is just one of them. And to talk again about what the restaurants are already doing, two weeks ago, I went to one of the fast-food restaurants, and I asked for a pamphlet that talks about their nutritional information for what I was about to order. No one could get that pamphlet for me. They said, we have one, let's go find it. They finally got one underneath some boxes behind them, and they dusted it off and brought it to me. We want to be able to walk into the restaurant and have that information readily available for people to make healthier choices. That's what this is about. Councilmembers, I urge for your a vote, and thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. If no other members wish to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send that forthwith without objection. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Next item that we have before us.
Next item is item 11, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Number 11, Ms. Han.
Thank you, colleagues. What we're doing on this item is approving an amendment to a tariff at the Port of Los Angeles, which will provide a financial incentive to the ships calling at the Port of Los Angeles to voluntarily reduce their speed when they're about 20 miles outside of the breakwater. Since 2001, we've actually had a voluntary vessel reduction speed program, where currently we have about 90% of the ships calling at the Port of Los Angeles who are complying with that. And since, well, in 2007, just this program alone, just this small act of the ships reducing their speed when they're coming into our harbor has reduced about 360 tons of greenhouse gases. We know now that ships are the biggest polluters in the harbor. We know that the ships contribute about 20% of all the air pollution in the LA region. So while we're working on clean trucks, we're working on alternative fuel vehicles in and around the port complex, the ships continue to be one of the largest polluters. But this simple act, again, of reducing their speed, which we can't mandate, but we're asking them to voluntarily do this, is a huge reduction in the amount of fuel that they're burning when they're coming in, and that of course reduces these gas house emissions. What this does is give a financial incentive. It's that we're going to help to reimburse some of their dockage fees, so that if they agree to do this voluntarily, we'll give them a little bit of a reimbursement on their dockage fees, and they also get a green flag that they can fly if they're in compliance with this program. We're hoping we get 100% of all the ships coming into the port complying with this vessel reduction speed program, and we hope this little bit of a financial incentive will encourage them to do that. And I'll tell you, if we can couple that with allowing them to plug into the electricity grid when they come into dock, we can dramatically reduce the emissions that are polluting not only just the region around the port, but many, many miles inland, folks are also affected by this kind of pollution. So what we're doing is a good idea. I commend the Harbor Department and the Board of Harbor Commissioners for coming up with this idea of giving them a financial incentive to do this. So I hope you'll agree with me that this is a good amendment to a current tariff and will ultimately reduce greenhouse gases in and around this region. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I'm not going to go into the details, because we heard it in committee, and we have a lot of other items here, but I'm very happy that Ms. Han made it special so the public can understand what we're doing here today. This is another major moment, another major moment in dealing with our air quality. You know, not only climate change and the whole issues of that, but our health and safety. We know that the lungs of the kids going in the inland empire is 15% less than those literally on the ocean's edge in Venice that get that fresh air and don't get that toxicity. A lot of that toxicity comes from the harbor. We are 42% of the goods, and it's going up to 50 to 60% in the years ahead. And if we can somehow limit it, we are certainly doing a preventive health issue, and more importantly, it's the right thing to do. When Mayor Han was over there in China, he talked about that coal ironing and sticking in the plug and making it happen. Get the electric thing, get out of that diesel. We know diesel has particulate matters, we know it creates cancer. So I applaud the Harbor Department, and of course, leadership of Ms. Han. We heard it in the committee, and obviously, we want unanimous support as another effort in the right direction in cleaning up our air. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. That closes the queue, and if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith without objection on that as well. We're going to hold 18 from Ms. Perry. She is returning back shortly, I'm told. Mr. Reyes is called 25 out of order. Let's take that, and we'll take, there's a couple cards, I believe, on 25 first. Mr. Zuma Dog on item 25, and then we'll hear from John Walsh. 25, sir, if you come forward. We'll make sure we take care of it. Oh, you want to know what it is? Special events.
He has no agenda needed for special event fee waivers. My name's Zuma Dog, and if you'd like to read all about this, zoomatimes.com. It's my website where I cover all the items here under LA City Council. I've spoken a lot about special event fee waivers. Let me explain how it works, people. This is supposed to be used for small, nonprofit, open-to-the-community, free events of community benefit. What happens, though, is tens of thousands of dollars are used to waive fees. Like last Tuesday, over a quarter million dollars they spent. Last Tuesday alone, a quarter million dollars special event fee waivers where they have these events, and what happens, the money is not waived, and I'm having a tough time talking because it is kind of quiet, but they say it's a waiver. I want people to know it comes out of the general fund. So every time they have a Vanity Fair party or declare USC football season a special event or all of these things, it comes out of the general fund. Just because the city council is waiving the participant of paying for it does not mean the police, fire, trash removal, parks and wrecks, and all the city services waive their fees when they show up at these events. So again, this is money coming out of the city general fund for street festivals and parties, and this is no time for street festivals and parties. We've got crisis on the streets. You're raising all kinds of fees, taxes, and bonds, and all these new things, and then you're just squandering the money. $50,000 for this festival, $60,000 for that festival, and you waive the fees. And I'd like to say, a lot of the people in the city are getting taxed for things like graffiti removal. You know, they get tagged on their buildings, and the windows get broken by criminals, and then the city gives them the bill and says, you have to fix it and clean for it and pay for it. I have an innovative strategy. Declare graffiti removal a special event throughout the city, and then the city will pay for it and not the business owners. Also, when it comes to some of the gang intervention money, maybe that should be used for graffiti removal and to fix some of these things. It is very quiet, noisy in here right now. It is very quiet, noisy in here right now, so I would just like to say, under a financial emergency like we're having, this is no time to spend a quarter of a million dollars in one day on festivals and street parties. Do some belt tightening.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Our next speaker is John Walsh. After that will be Arnold Sacks.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you read this carefully, you see that the big money, which is about millions of dollars, go to the Emmy Party. The Emmy Party, they get cops, they get everything they want. Then they say they're going to reimburse the city and they lowball it. They get, say, $300,000 or $400,000 worth of city services, they give the city $10,000. The Detour Festival, which is going to be on the agenda. Okay, the detour is LA Weekly. LA Weekly was doing an expose on Eric Garcetti. When they did the detour, when they found out the deal was made that they could close downtown LA and Jill Stewart, the editor of, the political editor of the LA Weekly, killed the story. Most of these are sugar-coated bribes. Now, I'm going to vote for Obama. I may vote for him two or three times, but it is not the city's position to give $3,767 to Rock the Vote Team concert. And believe me, there won't be one single McCain person there. Of course, I think they're fascist, but that's not the question. The question is whether the people up here, what they're going to do. And I'd like to say that I was personally attacked by Mr. Zine. You have no right to mention my employer, Mr. Zine, LAUSD and you're trying to retaliate because there was someone on the other position and take my job away from me. And I just want you to realize the rules, you people out there. They can attack us because we're the Untermensch. And don't get my name confused with Irish. Because my grandmother was a Jew named Bertha Berger. And when I have people like Mr. Zine trying to destroy my job, "Oh, he's a teacher at LAUSD and he opposes the LAUSD." I know what you're doing. I'm proud. I'm proud to be a Jew, I'm proud to be an Irishman and I'm proud to talk in front of you. And at least I live in a country. In other countries, I'd be shot dead for what I just said. At least in America, you just sneer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. God bless America. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. Yes, I, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Just very quickly, it was mentioned by the president of the council chambers on a previous occasion when I discussed, or a few other occasions when I've discussed having a program where you could general eyes for these special events, that this item would be taken up in the Finance and Budget Hearings Committee. And I'm just curious to know, this was like two or three months ago. What's the status on that hearing? Where is that in committee? All we keep seeing is more and 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 more special event fees, but we're still waiting for a policy regarding special event fees. I recall that there was an item and fee waivers for the convention center that only took seven years to be introduced. Do we have a seven-year wait for fee waivers for special events? By that time, we'll have taxed coming in, coming out. There'll be no more fees that you can collect from the public to cover the special events that you waive. Again, thank you for your time, your answers, and we're still waiting for that timeline and attention.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Sacks, last time I asked, which was a few weeks ago, it was still in the mayor's office. We're waiting for the report to come forward so we can actually schedule it. But thank you for staying on top of that. We now close, Mr. Reyes had an amending motion for part of 25. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I just wanted to change the date from September 6th to September 13th.
On which?
On 25H.
25H. Okay, great.
I think we have a motion circulating.
Sure, okay. If there's no objection to that change and we'll have the paper that will reinforce that, let's go ahead and change that date for the record and please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Next item is for this item number 20 and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 20 is next. We have John Walsh as our next speaker and then Zuma Dog on item number 20. Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Dog, did you want to speak on item number 20? It's the re-
Oh, no, 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 not this one.
ISIS Sage, is there ISIS Sage?
She put in the wrong card number, too. We put in the wrong card number. Back, is Kim-
Oh, 23, okay. We'll close the public hearing on 20 then. If we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21 called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Dog, item number 21. Any of, I think one minute left, sir. Item 21. Go on once, go on twice, all right. Close the public hearing on that. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 23 called special.
Okay, we have cards in the public first. We'll take those real quick and then I'll recognize you, Mr. Labange. Zuma Dog on 23. We have one minute left.
Yes, thank you, Zuma Dog. And I brought a new speaker with me because sometimes I get kicked out and I run out of time. Her name's ISIS Sage and she represents, I like her a lot, I brought her in here. Welcome her, please, with your attention. Right now, number 23, it's about, there's a White House conference on children and youth. Children and youth, very important city of Los Angeles. Here's some things I'd like to have included in here. I'd like the Washington conference, I'd like them to know how badly our schools are in disrepair and how there's not even a shot of fixing it anytime soon. You've got the mayor off on some crazy experiment over there and you got divisiveness. So don't look for the schools to be fixed anytime soon. And we have another problem with dual-income families, a lot of kids running loose on the streets without any parental involvement. So we do have a crisis on our hands. And I'd like to say with my time left, at this convention, when you talk about children and youth, it reminds me, I'd like to see all this special event fee money and all the nonprofit money that you are taking and use it for children and youth, for youth development in real and meaningful ways. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. ISIS Sage is our next speaker. Good morning, Ms. Sage.
Hello. Yes, my name's ISIS Sage. I'm an assistant teacher with L- Unified. I've taken leave of absence. However, I'm here, this is a very, thank you. This is a issue close to my heart. To begin with, the White House initiated a program called No Child Left Behind Act a while ago. Now, LAUSD claims dropout rate approximately 25% and our mayor, Villanueva, claims double that amount. Instead of another White House conference on children and youth, explain the difference, when do the child, or better yet said, when does the youth stop being a child? Why not take position on returning No Child Left Behind and help lower dropout rates? Once you resolve that, then move on to further action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sage. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you, members. This is just important. We look to the future. It is about children, it is about families, it's an important conference. Strong support, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was under 10 seconds, Mr. Labange has promised. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 27 and that was called special for cards.
Okay, Arnold Sacks on item number 27, please.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, just for some clarification, this is an item regarding convention center fee waiver policy. But on item number 18, you had a signage proposal with LA Arena Land Company Incorporated for exclusive signage rights for the exterior of the Los Angeles Convention Center. It would be very interesting to find out what the relationship between LA Arena Land Company Incorporated and are they involved in any of these convention center fee waivers? And then in today's newspaper, on the calendar section, or no, excuse me, in the California section, it states AEG given exclusive signage rights to post signs on the LA Convention Center. Now, I was in the hearings, no mention of AEG. What is AEG, oh, excuse me, what is the relationship between the Los Angeles, the LA Arena Land Company Incorporated, AEG and the convention center? How are funds funneled in there? Do funds go from AEG to the LA Arena Land Company Incorporated for use by the, it says here, given money to 13, 11 of the current, 15 current, 11 of the 15 current members of the city council as well as the city attorney and the controller's office. I'm waiting.
This, excuse me, this matter is regarding the fee waiver.
Excuse me, sir. When you had before you the smoking ban in farmer's market, we got to hear from one of the council members regarding AIDS. How that was in terms-
Still not talking about the fee waiver.
Sir?
But it's not before us right now. Those were previous items, you're right. But if you could keep it limited to this one, thank you.
I'm just curious to find out how this policy works. When the public is not on point.
The Brown Act does work differently for public comment as opposed to debate stuff that is happening, but we will make sure we can get some answers on the questions you asked. We'll close our comments on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item number 29 called special for cards.
Okay, item number 29 is now before us. We have Zuma Dog who has expired his time, we'll enter that into the record and John Walsh is our next speaker. And I believe you have one minute left, sir. Thank you.
Incidentally, you notice these badges? They're trying to make lobbyists wear badges. Some of them are blue and some of them are pink, just like in concentration camps. This one, and you don't have to do this at LAUSD or any, this is pink. That means I'm a homosexual. And if you want to know anything about my personal life, go to Mr. Zine. He's got a file on me, he knows where I work and we have two rules here. Notice how they're not interrupting me now because they know this could be a lawsuit. Because if LAUSD fires me for what I'm doing here, I'm going to go, this tape is part of the lawsuit. Remember, I love America because if I were in Mexico or if I were in 100 other countries, I'd be dragged out here and I'd be shot and my mother would be killed and my father would be killed. And the only good thing about this country is you don't murder people like me. But it's always a beginning. And if McCain comes in, there'll be more. And as far as this productivity organization is concerned, five minutes, you can take your five minutes and fold it four ways.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That is our public comment for that item and that will close our public comment. Any members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, please go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 33.
Okay, and that had one card from Mr. Dog. We'll enter that into the record. Any members wishing to be heard on 33? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. That will take us back to 18 and Mr. Labange called that special. We're, I know, awaiting Ms. Perry as well on this, but why don't we take up item 18? And Mr. Labange, if you'd like to be recognized first on this item.
Members, I don't know, Mr. Miller, if you need to sit there. This is the first time it's coming to us. It will come back in some other form, too. They get an application. 18. Yeah, I'm going to, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, the chair of the committee asked to speak first, so I'll ask, let her speak first, then I'll speak second.
Absolutely, all right, sure. Ms. Han? We'll start our deliberations, we'll see if you can-
Okay, thank you. Well, again, we heard this in our committee and I'm glad we're going to have this. I think we need a healthy debate on this proposal. And council members, we know that when we went through our tough budget time this year, we were looking to close a, I don't know, $400 million budget gap and we looked for ways to raise revenue without cutting services. This didn't exactly come through the budget process, but maybe one of the things you can tell us is, how did this proposal come to us? What's the history of it? And, you know, how did this agreement get negotiated? Maybe you can give us a little bit of a lesson on where this proposal came from.
Sure, be happy to. This actually, the genesis of this started back in the Staples negotiation some 12 years ago. And at the time, when we were negotiating with the developers of the arena, they asked for signage rights on the convention center. And of course, the city was not, at that point, under no circumstances was the city going to give up signage rights on its property. They were, however, concerned that the city itself would put up signage on the center and there would be, you know, competition which would impact what they were trying to do with Staples. So both sides agreed with the original Staples deal that there would be no commercial signage either on Staples itself or on the convention center. And both sides recognized and agreed that as they proceeded to develop Staples and what we were really after was the hotel and the development of LA Live, the issue of commercial signage was going to have to come back. So that was the genesis of this some 12 years ago. Now, what occurred about 18 months ago is with proceeding with the development of the hotel and the rest of LA Live, AEG came to the city with a proposal for having commercial signage rights on the convention center. And at that time, they proposed guaranteeing the city $2 million per year for those signage rights. And we were instructed to enter negotiations with them on that proposal, really consistent with the intent 12 years ago. And what's before you today, again, is not approval of the signage. What's before you today is the business deal that's been negotiated. It is substantially better than was proposed 18 months ago.
And what is that deal?
The deal today is we still have the $2 million guarantee.
So no matter what, no matter how much revenue comes in, we get, bottom line, $2 million annually.
At least $2 million annually. They will incur all of the costs. They'll incur all of the costs for building the signs, they'll incur all of the costs for maintaining the signs. There is no risk to the city and they will guarantee us $2 million a year. Now, instead of being inflated at 5% every five years, it's being inflated at 3% every year.
That $2 million.
That $2 million. So the guarantee goes up every year by 3%. On a present value basis, on the guarantee alone, that's over 10 years, $2 million more to the city than what was proposed initially. In addition to the guarantee, what we negotiated with them is that some of the signage would not, would be on top of the guarantee and there would be a revenue split from that sign. So they reserved some of the signage to back the $2 million guarantee and all of the other signage, there is a revenue split that they will share with the city depending upon, you know.
And what is that?
For the first $5 million, it's in revenue, it's 25% to the city, 75% to AEG or to Lanco. For the second $5 million, it's a 50-50 split and anything above that is 75% to the city, 25% to AEG.
And that's on top of the $2 million?
On top of the $2 million.
So let's say they brought in, let's just say, $11 million, one year. How much, so we guaranteed we'd get $2 million.
We would get $2 million plus 25% of-
Of the first $5 million.
Of the first $5 and 50% of the six.
And 75% of the last million. So first $5 would be, we'd get 1.25.
We'd get 1.25 million.
Second $5, we'd get 2.5 and the last million, we would get 7.5. So that would be 4.5 million on top of the $2 million?
Uh, yeah, I think if the arithmetic is correct, yes.
So if they bring in $11 million, we get 6.5 million.
I'm sorry, I didn't have to do the math, but I'm-
I think that's right. I think that's right.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, so that's the deal.
That is the deal.
So that's a pretty good deal. We don't have to put the signage up, we don't have to maintain the signage. That's revenue. They go out and get all the advertising, we don't have to do any of that work and we get-
Correct.
I think, from my calculations, about $6 million.
Now, it's also important to note here, that this is for the first ten years. After ten years, the city, in its sole discretion, has the option of giving up the two-million-dollar guarantee and putting virtually all of the signage into the revenue share. So after ten years, we'll know what kind of revenue is out there, and if it makes sense to give up on the guarantee and get more revenue by putting everything into the revenue sharing agreement, it is the city's option to do that. Mr. Rosendahl in committee wanted that every five years.
Right.
They have agreed to that.
Okay, good.
The agreement before you has five-year renewals, and it will be the city's option to either continue with the guarantee or to give up the guarantee if it's gonna get more revenue by including them in the revenue share.
Okay, so obviously, this is money that the city has never been able to realize before. It's, could be a significant amount of revenue that, that comes to the city. One of the issues is, that I, I know I've heard about, is there's a concern that if we begin allowing signs in the downtown sports and entertainment zone, that it'll be more difficult for us to regulate billboards, you know, in other parts of the city. If we're allowing this, does that set, set some kind of a precedent that we'll see this type of advertising cropping up in other parts of the city?
Well, no. Again, I mean, this is within a specific plan area, which is in the ordinance. As you know, there are challenges to, to the city's off-site advertising ban. Those are going through separately, but again, you are not approving the signage today. You will have an opportunity to have that discussion when once, they're, they're going to have--
And how does the signage get approved?
They're gonna have to do their CECL clearance, they're gonna have to amend the signage ordinance, they're gonna have to send it through planning. It'll have to go to the Planning Commission with the hearings that are required. It would then have to, it would then go to a Plum Committee and then come back to the council. So, so again, that, that's the process for approving the signage. There's no point in, in them going through that process--
If we don't approve--
--if there is not a business deal to be had on, on the city property.
So Jerry, do you think this is a good deal for the city of Los Angeles? Could we have a better deal? Is this better than what was originally proposed? Is this a good deal?
I think this is an excellent deal. We, we have no downside risk at all, and, and through our negotiations, we have been able to capture significant upside benefit. So I think this is a very good deal for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. LeBonde.
Yeah, first and foremost, one question. If, let's say this is put up, and they get the approval from the Planning Department to put this up here, and there's some accident on the Harbor Freeway, what liability will the city of Los Angeles have if some driver says, "I was looking at an advertisement for who's playing at Staples Center, who's playing at L.A. Live, who's playing in the theater"? What kind of protection do we have? Because I think this is one of the concerns that people have expressed to me on these other boards around the town that are flashy, that they may obstruct the concentration of drivers.
Again, to be clear, you are not approving these signs today.
Right.
So that is a discussion--
I'm trying to be, look down the road, I don't wanna invite him into the house to have him eat, or to find out I'm not gonna let him eat.
Right. I mean, ultimately, you know, the city attorney should address that, but the position in the past has been, there is an approval process they need to go through, including getting a Caltrans permit.
So when it comes, I wanna make sure--
And when it comes through the process--
Make sure at least that the city's not held liable for this.
Correct.
Or the Convention Center's not held liable.
That's right.
Who owns the land that the Los Angeles Arena's on?
Staples?
Yes.
Uh, the city does.
The city does. Who own the land that L.A. Live is on?
They do.
They do?
Uh, AEG does.
AEG, all the way to Olympic Boulevard, to Figaro there?
Yes.
And what are they gonna fix, some of those off-ramps and on-ramps there? Because with this great intensity that's going on of good redevelopment, if you could call it, there are new development, it doesn't seem like much has been done on the freeway access ramps there, and there's a little congestion.
Well, I'm sure that they'd be happy to meet with you. Some of the stuff they've done, I mean, the, the entrance off Olympic and the Bixell Street on-ramp, and some of the other improvements that they have been made, and perhaps Perry can address more.
Right.
Right. Actually, there is a, a plan, and going forward, a part of it has been implemented. The on-ramp to the 110 freeway off of Eleventh or Chickens Court has been actually widened, and we're currently working with also DOT in terms of the programming of the sign.
But it hasn't been completed yet.
What is it?
It hasn't been completed.
It has been completed.
It has been completed?
Yes. The on-ramp to the 110--
South Allen.
South.
That's a completed job. I'll have to look at it again.
Yes.
Lastly, members, I did circulate it, Ms. Han, the Chair, did do this, since this is a potential that in years in the future, which is 2010 or 2009, Jerry?
Well, there, there's two million dollars in the current 2009 budget, so 2010--
In which budget?
In, in the current year budget.
Okay, so in, in the, not this budget, but future years, that there'd be a designation of one-point-five percent of all revenue that would go to the Cultural Affairs Department, directed to artists in the city as grants, and a competitive form that we have would be a possibility for revenue stream. I know the Convention Center wants some of that money for the improvements necessary for the Convention Center, but I think we should do something for the artists, if this is somewhat of an artistic sign that they project up there. Is that correct there, Mr. Miller?
Uh, yeah. They will be in keeping with the district and create the ambiance that's intended--
You see my logic of trying to get something for the artists out of this.
And that's entirely up to this council on how you wanna spend the money.
Right, so if we vote for that, this is attached to this file, this is to attach to this, is that correct?
Uh, that, that--
This was a friendly amendment that I made in committee that I wanted to be more than a friendly amendment, so I wanted to make it now. Is that correct on this?
But again, that, that is before you, the council can adopt that, the council can refer it to committee, I mean, it's entirely up to the council how it wants to spend the money.
Okay, so this is eighteen A. So, okay, thank you, members, I ask for your support on that, thank you.
Ms. Perry is next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I, I did not have the opportunity to hear the beginning of the discussion, but I, I want to reemphasize what Mr. Miller has been so apt at conveying, that this is about the signage rights, not the actual design of the sign, not defining exactly what will go in, because that's a separate process that will be ongoing, and will afford the community and all of those who are interested the opportunity to participate fully and vigorously in that discussion. This is just to establish the right to do this, and I know we have two speakers after that, but this is a step in a very, very, very long process, but I can think of no better corridor, more suited for the rights to have signage than a corridor such as this one, the sports and entertainment corridor, that has minimal amounts of housing on it at this point, so in terms of its impact, visual and otherwise, to people who might be living on the immediate corridor, that is, that, that at this point is not a major issue. And I did read the Times this morning, and looking forward to working with Mr. Reyes on his neighborhood groups from the other side of the freeway, and any groups that may arise. But again, this is just about the right, not the sign itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl's next.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. Just a privilege here, I do wanna talk, but I'd like to know, are there speaker cards on this issue, Mr. President? Are there speaker cards on it?
We do have the number, we have five speaker cards, I believe, and I think we had the hearing in, in committee, so it would require a motion and approval of the council to reopen.
Uh, colleagues, I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the public hearing and allow the five speakers to address the council, and then I reserve my time to speak after they speak.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues? Seeing none, we will reopen, is it a minute per speaker? Is that a motion?
I'd like to give them each two minutes.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Okay, Dennis Hathaway will be our first speaker, then. After that is David Ewing.
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Hathaway, I'm president of the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. In 2002, this city council passed a ban on all new off-site billboards and advertising signs, except under very special circumstances. And some of you council members were on that council at the time, and some of you voted for that. And the express purpose of this off-site sign ban was to protect the visual qualities of the city and to, and to address issues of traffic safety. You're, you're talking about selling the rights to fifty thousand square feet of signage on the Convention Center. That is equivalent to seventy-four full-size conventional billboards. You're talking about putting seventy-four billboards in a concentrated public space. This is one of the busiest freeways in the, busiest freeway intersections in the city. Cars going different directions, merging, changing lanes. Right across from this freeway is a residential area, and we've gotten many calls from people from the Pico Union neighborhood complaining about light pollution from the Staples Center The courts have cited the city's granting of exceptions and allowing proliferation of signs as a reason why this sign ban can't be enforced. If you do this, you're, you're basically throwing the sign ban totally out the window. I think that your role as a city council is to protect people and to enhance the public qualities of this city. And by doing this, you're doing exactly the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ewing is our next speaker. After that is Marilyn Cohen.
Good morning, council members. My name is David Ewing, I live in the Venice area. I'd like to address one thing right away, and that is the idea that you are only passing a motion on the rights this morning. What you are really doing is short-circuiting the, the, the proper process. If you think for a minute that the Planning Department, the Plum Committee, and so forth, are gonna be able to reverse a decision that you make today, I, I think that's unrealistic. I understand that the city has a huge financial hole that it has to fill, but I also think that you do not create a great city by selling off its quality of life piece by piece. And if you're going to sell billboard space on city buildings, if you wanna make a good deal for the city, you don't rush through a no-bid contract with a major power play. This application is only a month old. So whatever considerations have taken place have not been on this application, or they've been behind closed doors. It's not a good financial, I don't think it's a good financial deal, I don't know, but neither do you unless you open this up to a bidding process. This idea that we shoot from the hip all the time on this issue has gotten the city in trouble time after time. You have been outmaneuvered and outlawed consistently by the billboard industry. This is a minefield. This is ground zero for unintended consequences to the public and to public policy. You've lost control of the billboards in the city. This is not the way to make money from billboards. You have to regain control of the billboard industry in the city.
Thank you, sir.
And I would ask also, one last thing.
Very briefly.
Why are we getting legal opinions from the CLA's office on, on, on the city's liability in traffic accidents rather than the city attorney's office?
Thank you. Marilyn Cohen is our next speaker. After that is Michael Cornwell. Good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Cohen, and as the vice president of Westwood South of Santa Monica Homeowners Association, I am representing the owners of over thirty-eight-hundred homes. This should really be titled billionaires at the trough. We have given Anschutz Entertainment Group two-hundred-and-seventy-million dollars. Just think about that, when you're talking about two million dollars here and two million dollars there. Let me begin by asking you a question. When you visit any place celebrated for its beauty, Santa Barbara, Marin County, Paris, do you stop and think, "Boy, what this place needs is a bunch of billboards"? The guardians of those places have taken seriously their responsibility to be shepherds of the essential quality of those locales, and they have become the timeless reminders of our higher and better selves. Think of the hundreds of thousands of visitors to the Convention Center each year. Monstrous flashing ads, is that the image of Los Angeles we wanna present? What are we saying about the quality of our city? If we succumb to the bright lights, big-money siren call of the billboard industry, what do we leave for our children, for visitors to the natural beauty of this land, for residents seeking some humanly scaled quality of life? Are the people of Los Angeles telling you that our role model should be the Las Vegas Strip? If preserving the natural beauty of the city does not appeal to your sense of responsibility, perhaps the issue of safety may tweak your conscience. Contrary to the self-serving studies commissioned by the billboard industry, as noted in the Christian Science Monitor, the very reason these, these signs appeal to advertisers is the reason they pose a danger on the roadways. The billboards are designed to distract. A study on driver behavior reduced by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration last April showed that distractions in which a driver spent more than two seconds looking elsewhere than the road contributed to twenty-two percent of overall accidents. Your responsibility is to the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Cornwell.
Can I, can I leave this? Thank you, President Garcetti and council members. I'm Michael Cornwell. I lived in Los Angeles for seventy of my seventy-four years, but I retired a few years ago, moved to Pasadena, a virtually billboard-free city. I'm still watching L.A. I live adjacent to Eagle Rock on the Arroyo, so, in any event, before many of you were born, Marvin Browdy and I made an effort where billboards. I was a member of the Junior Chamber of Commerce, and I had Marvin involved, but at that time, I think Mike Toby and Jim Sample from Foster and Kleiser were members of the Junior Chamber, and there was no way of moving in a, a support of Marvin's efforts. So I thought when I read this article and heard Jen Perry yesterday on Pat Morrison's show, I'd come down here because, Marvin, wherever you are, I have a fear that these ladies and gentlemen are about to make a terrible mistake. I agree with the previous speakers. You don't know what you're voting for, it's a pig and a poke, a pig with lipstick, that seems to be big in the news today. The hearings have been before a very obscure committee. I don't know who on this council took out the mantle of bill, of billboards. I know Councilwoman Weiss has made some serious efforts in West L.A., but no one knows how many billboards there are. I like Tom's suggestion of money going to the cultural arts. I'm still, still involved in L.A. on the committee trying to save the Watts Towers from the bureaucrats. Maybe some of that large, you guys can go to the blight in Watts. Talk about Watts, look at Councilwoman Hans district. I go to the Watts Towers at least once or twice a week, and it's a disgrace. So, you know, I know I don't have much time, and I had a few notes here, but I think the Times article made more sense. The architects who designed the, the Convention Center, they had, they designed it without the thought of signs all over it, and the biggest signs are gonna be facing the Harbor Freeway. It's a traffic disaster. I've had two accidents, and my insurance company ruled I was distracted. And that's because I used to drive about my old neighborhood of Larchmont and Winter Square looking for violations of codes--
Thank you, sir, that's all the time we have. We, we try to keep it as even as possible, two minutes per speaker, so, thank you very much, we appreciate you. And Will Wright is our next speaker. Mr. Wright, could you come forward, please?
My name's Will Wright, I work for the American Institute of Architects, Los Angeles chapter, and before I start, I just wanna say that, you know, I'm, I'm excited to live in Los Angeles. This is one of my most favorite cities of any city I've ever visited in the entire, like one-hundred-and-eighty-four cities in the world. I'm also excited to have your leadership on this council. The city is allowing the use of its visual bandwidth without understanding how much that bandwidth is worth. I see a number like six million, and I think of that as a fortuitous number, but at the exact same time, you have to say, is that two million a year guarantee? Is that perhaps valued at twenty million, perhaps at two-hundred million? We do not know. Also, if you look at the fine print, I think, on this issue, about AEG's desire to sell tickets will perhaps triumph their desire to sell advertising space. In other words, I think twenty-five percent of that goes towards events at AEG-owned facilities, twenty-five percent goes to Convention Center events, and I think fifty percent would go towards the sponsors of AEG's, the sponsorship. And so, in other words, are they the best person to realize value on that visual real estate? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. And I think you have one minute left, sir.
Good, thank you. Again, now I get to talk on this. Key component of this piece of legislation is, the signage proposal is with the L.A. Arena Land Company, but AEG will be renting the sign space. What's the city's, what's the city's relationship with AEG? AEG-- AEG wants to rent to somebody? The city doesn't have a say in that because their relationship is with the LA Arena Land Company. When you're doing your roundtable discussion here, or this half-horseshoe discussion, why don't you discuss for the public the relationship between AEG and the LA Arena Land Company and the city? And then discuss the city's relationship with AEG without the LA Arena Land Company. Then the public can know exactly what you're talking about. Remember, LAX expansion? The neighborhoods complained. We've heard there's not much population in the area. What happens when the population increases and they say, signs come down?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you for your comment. We also had a card from Mr. Walsh, but the five minutes have been expired, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. He reopened a public hearing, but we did not waive the rules, sir. Thank you. That will close the public hearing. And if we can now call Mr. Rosendahl. Sir, excuse me. Sir, you're disrupting the meeting. If I could please have the sergeants take care of him. You're disrupting the meeting, sir. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for allowing me to open up the public hearing again for that discussion. How did we come to an arrangement with this particular company? Give us the history of that, please. Hold my time.
Sure. Well, as indicated in my opening remarks, this dates back to the original Staples negotiation. They, at the time, wanted commercial signage rights out of the convention center. The city said absolutely not. They were also concerned that the city would sell rights on the convention center that would compete with their sponsorships and how they financed the arena. So both sides agreed at the time that neither could do commercial signage on either the arena or on the convention center. And both sides agreed that we would be back here someday as the hotel was developed and as LA Live proceeded to develop a commercial signage proposal that would work for both entities.
Is the city attorney here, somebody from the city attorney's office, who can comment on this deal that was cut 12 years ago? Anybody from the city attorney's office?
Well, certainly nobody that was here 12 years ago. But Marilyn Garcia is here from city attorney.
Just because somebody made a deal 12 years ago, it might be a bad deal. You know, like a lot of other things in life, we learn by experiences. I mean, is there any opportunity to throw this out to competitive bidding?
No, there is not. The city does not -- the city contractually agreed 12 years ago that it would need AEG -- it would need to work with AEG to do commercial signage on the convention center.
Okay. Is that city attorney?
I'm the city attorney who assisted with the business negotiations. I wasn't here 12 years ago, but I've read the document that gave the -- where the rights were set out.
Excellent. Your name for the record and explain it to us.
Oh, Marilyn Garcia.
Thank you, Marilyn. Go ahead. Explain it to us.
Well, one of the documents that was executed by the city and AEG or an affiliate sets out that the city cannot sell any rights on the surface of the convention center to anyone else. So the only entity that could have -- that the city could sell them to would be AEG.
Can't we reconsider that? And it's a new day, like climate change is a new day. Isn't there an ability for us to reflect on it and say enough is enough and maybe bring it, put it out to competitive bidding? Or is that impossible?
Well, the city is already obligated not to sell it to anybody else. You could leave it blank, but you can't sell that to anyone else.
So we can't, under any circumstances? We get a lawsuit or something?
Well, I don't have the agreement in front of me to say if it's perpetual or whatever. Is it perpetual? I mean, but in general, those rights are set already in a contract.
It's for the term of the Staples lease, which has about another 45 years to go.
Okay. When we went before committee, it was 10 years, 10 years, 10 years, and I said, that's too much. I mean, we need to reevaluate, take a deep breath. Now, you've just said that you came back to us and said it could be five years, five years, five years, five years. But why can't the first 10 years be five years, five years, rather than a full 10 years?
Because they need the first 10 years in order to sell to their district sponsors to back the city's $2 million guarantee.
That's our opinion. What about the money itself, cash flow? I mean, this is a huge opportunity for them. You heard one of the speakers say it's like 78 real billboards. I mean, could this not be a tremendously lucrative opportunity for them, locking them in at such a dollar figure, which seems minimal to me? I know there's no risk in our part. It's money, and we love money. We need it. We're in a budget deficit. But isn't there any opportunity to renegotiate in five years? That kind of an opportunity so that maybe it could be more money for the city?
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, that is what's before you. After the first 10 years.
10 years, I know. But how about five years? I don't buy this 10 years.
No, they will not accept anything less than the initial 10-year period because, remember, they're incurring all of the costs to install these signs, all of the costs to maintain them, all of the costs in order to develop a signage program and to sell them. They need those 10 years to back the guarantee.
Okay. Well, let me just ask you this question. Are we subsidizing them in a lot of other projects, this particular group, over $200 million? What I read in the paper, is that true?
There is. The hotel, the convention hotel, the city did agree to allow them to keep their hotel tax for a period of 25 years, I believe, and it is approximately $270 million.
25 years. They don't have to pay bed tax. Is that right?
Yes, but as we went through when that deal was initially approved, this is bed tax we would not otherwise receive. The city --
Look, I understand all that chicken and egg and all that, but boy, that's a sweetheart deal as far as I'm concerned, giving them 25 years of the bed tax. But let me get into a more specific safety issue. I take that 10 to the 110 and come downtown three times, four or five times a week, and at night as well. What about the fear that some of us have that it will be a safety issue, that it will be bright lighted? We're not Times Square in the middle of the freeway, to be honest with you. I'd rather have it not on the freeway. Could we have some safety issues that we haven't addressed?
Those issues are exactly what are going to be addressed in the planning process, which is not before you. They're going to have to address that in the SEQA. They're going to have to address that to the community. They're going to have to address that in their Caltrans permit. They're going to have to address that before the Planning Commission and ultimately before Mr. Reyes' commission in the council. So that is not before you today. What is before you today is a business deal that would enable them to proceed with the planning process and environmental clearances to get the entitlements to do the signs.
I understand. And I know some of my colleagues said it's a great business deal. I've been a businessman. I don't think it's a great business deal for the city at all. I think it's a great business deal for this private vendor. And I know we can't react any more than that by saying that. And I feel without the flexibility of five years to revisit it, to look at cash flow, to look at money, we've given them an opportunity from a business deal standpoint. I don't blame the private sector. That's their jobs, get the best they can. But we represent the people, and I don't think it's a good deal for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, and after that is Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Council President. I want to ask the folks at the table, when we go through this process, knowing it's not before us now, this is the deal, but we're going to be following a whole process that speaks to this notion of impact and benefits and mitigation, just generally from our convention center rep, can you just speak to in general what you see in the future as far as, very general way, the type of benefits that will be felt by the local neighborhoods as a result of this effort? Can you speak to that in a very general way? I know there's issues on the arterials, the main streets that come into the area that need a lot of work at this time, the conditions of the on-ramps and off-ramps as they exit into our neighborhoods that impact both District 1 and 9. Could you speak in general what is possible out there without making any commitments? Please hold my time.
Certainly. And again, I'll speak in general terms, in terms of what this city has envisioned and what I have understood about the sports and entertainment district being a vibrant, dynamic environment where it's inviting to bring both regular citizens of Los Angeles and out-of-town visitors. One of the needs that we have to definitely address before this council, and I will be working with Officer of the CLA to come back to you on this, has to do with the arteries that feed into this district. It's not just good to improve the sports and entertainment district on the other side of the freeway, but again, the arteries that come into that district, obviously from the district that you represent, Councilmember Reyes, is going to be ultimately very important. And we've started some work and some design work because attendees that come to the convention center or come to the LA Live and the attendees that we're going to draw to this district are going to pass through those neighborhoods. And those neighborhoods need to have the right appeal to make sure that we enhance the desirability of the district and ultimately get to the point where we want it to get to, meaning that we have a center for Los Angeles that's inviting, as vibrant, as economically feasible. So the things that we are going to be working on, very separate from this, is the strategic initiatives of the convention center that takes into account the community around the convention center, including Districts 1 and 9. And again, we are looking at adding some green space, as an example, to our Gilbert and Lindsay Plaza to be enjoyed by their residents on both sides of the freeway.
Thank you. And colleagues, I urge and I vote for the simple fact that we have now something to work with in terms of changing our environment and making real benefit for the areas, not only throughout the city, in relation to the business of generating jobs, construction jobs, the whole issue of a location destination for our conventions. It's all tied into each other. And it's a major piece that I feel will complement the direction of this area. LA Live has been put into place many years ago, and this is an evolving staging experience that we're going through in terms of how we create new opportunities. So for me, it's an easy call for the simple fact that we can now have access to resources that we wouldn't have before. Now, this is an area that needs incredible support in terms of the economic development aspect of these pockets. I know it's easy for folks who don't live in this area, who don't understand the level of poverty that exists here, who don't experience the day-to-day challenges, to be easy to say we don't need this. This is the wrong direction for the folks who will create jobs, the folks who will receive jobs, the folks who will be able to pay their rent, the folks who will be able to feed their children, the folks who will see change at the street level with the sidewalks, new streets, new lights, new security. That is a very real experience. And for those reasons, we should be creative, we should be aggressive in how we change the quality of life for every individual in the city, and hopefully ignore those who tend to be the voiceless. So thank you for this presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is next, and then Mr. Labonge and Ms. Hahn for a second time each. Mr. Cardenas.
I'd just like to -- we've been focusing on the signage or what have you, but I think it's important for us to focus on the fact that this is a responsibility of the city, this facility. What is the value of that facility, the actual complex of the convention center?
The convention center is built --
The asset value?
Yes. We have the land assets and obviously the building assets. It's built on 54 acres of land in the hottest real estate market in the nation, and it's composed of 4.1 million square feet of built space, high-quality built space. So it would be, if you were to appraise it, if I was an appraiser, it would be somewhere between $2.5 to $3 billion asset.
$2.5 to $3 billion asset. And what is the basic round figure of what the investment is on this signage in this particular aspect that we're talking about today?
I believe the estimated cost would be around $20 million to --
How much?
$20 million.
About $20 million. So the bottom line is, this is just a small part of us handling our responsibility of making sure that this facility is in good condition, it's efficient, it's serving its purpose, and enhancing what we now have, fortunately or unfortunately having to keep up with the Joneses, what's going on across the street from this proposed signage and adjacent to it? Are they modern buildings? Are they much more modern than the convention center? Are we now starting to look like we're out of place there?
Certainly. And I thank you, Councilmember, for bringing that up. That is actually a very important issue that we are going to be bringing back to the council. The part of the building that's closest to LA Live is a 1971-built, the Blue Building, the west hall of the convention center, which is definitely showing its age, and is certainly juxtaposed to the architectural elements of LA Live and the buildings around it. So that is a very important issue that needs to be addressed.
How old is LA Live?
LA Live, actually, the first component of LA Live being Nokia Theater opened in October of 2007. The last component of it being the Headquarter Hotel is going to open in the first quarter of 2010.
So this might be government actually being a little bit more proactive than usual when it comes to trying to figure out how to address their assets within the community that they're in?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Labonge.
Well, Mr. Labonge, I thought it would be important. I know one of the public speakers made a comment. If you could contact the City of New York and their Public Works Department, you know, they mentioned 42nd Street, someone did. I'm sure there's an impact there. There may be some relationship there, to see what kind of protection the City of New York has as it relates to that. I do believe, Mr. Rosendahl, there's certain assets that are different. If this was the public library that people fought for after it was destroyed by fire and two arson fires in the mid-'80s, it would be a very hard sell. But this is a commercial enterprise, and today CNN and another company, I understand, said we're an unfriendly city, which was disappointing to hear the report there. This is going to be a gateway area. And I was thinking, what you said about going out to bid, well, what if, let's say, Old Town Pasadena Associates went out to bid and bought all the boards and said, don't come here, go up the freeway and come to Pasadena? Or what if somebody else had come to Universal City, which is a county island within the city? I could understand the relationship as I ask in my questions, who owns the land? We own the land that Staples on. The company, AEG, has bought the land at Olympic Boulevard, Figueroa, and is it Cherry Street?
Yes.
Cherry Street, right there, right in there. So and Georgia Street is no more. Georgia used to be in that complex as well. So I could understand that. I'm asking that there be a -- and it is a significant dollars what this does generate. I know some of the constituents I represent, and I could not see this in the 101 corridor. I could not see this in the 101 corridor in Hollywood. I just couldn't see it in there as it relates to it. But this has been a process, and now is going to come forth, and that people will discuss that. I know on the other issue, too, that took place on the MTA site on Santa Monica Freeway, east of this location, I supported because it helped build a park at 54th Street in Ms. Perry's district. We have to look at some of our assets and do what is right. I don't want anything done in Griffith Park that would destroy the nature of Griffith Park. I wouldn't want to see any of these signs. But they do have information signs that tell people where to park or how to get to the zoo. It's a technology that they now use. So all that being said, it's going to come back. We'll have other opportunities to comment on it. But there is a relationship. And under the leadership of this general manager, the convention center has tried to make a relationship with an enterprise that came to the south end of downtown that is making a difference in the lives of many people as it's energized the growth of the downtown region. And the same is true with Los Angeles International Airport, okay? In the sense, it's an important location that has a citywide impact, countywide impact, statewide impact, international impact.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
I thank you, and I bid you good afternoon.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. You know, again, I mean, we're listening to you, and we're listening to you, Jerry, in terms of whether or not this is a good deal. I know Councilman Rosendahl doesn't think it's a good deal. You know, but when I look at it, and we don't know, which is why it's hard to project the revenue, but I'm still looking at anything over $10 million that comes in for advertising, you know, the city gets 75% of that. That seems to be a pretty good revenue-sharing agreement. I would agree that I wish we could look at it in five years. I think that would help us kind of look on whether or not we need to renegotiate this deal. But it seems like, you know, again, guaranteed $2 million, first $5 million, we get 25% of it, the second $5 million, we get half of it, and anything over that, we get 75% of that revenue. So it could be a good source of revenue that we've never had. I think with Tom's amendment, the artists in town will get to also achieve benefits. But I do want to thank Dennis Hathaway and all of you who did come down today. And I like a couple lines from your op-ed piece. I would clarify that it's not necessarily my plan. This was conceived without me at the table. It just came to the Commerce, Trade, and Tourism Committee, and we are about tourism, and we are about being a friendly city, and we are about attracting people to the convention center, to Staples, to -- to the convention center, to Staples, to L.A. Live. But interestingly, Dennis says, interestingly, the council is also expected to vote today on a number of fee waivers for churches' Golden Jubilee celebrations, a block club party, a farmer's market, and others. Such waivers mean the city picks up the tab for traffic control, policing cleanup, add up to more than $1 million annually, about half of what we hope to get as our minimum guarantee of this signage agreement. And then you went on to say, this isn't to say the city should stop providing fee services to groups staging worthwhile benefits. But you said we owed the public a debate on what we actually were getting with this agreement, which I think we tried to do today, was to have a debate. And I think you, you heard that it's not unanimous. Everybody doesn't love this deal. So we have looked at the issues. But I do want to be the kind of city that continues to give fee waivers to churches' Golden Jubilee celebrations, to farmer's markets, to nonprofit events. I do want to be that kind of city. And I think this kind of agreement helps us to continue to provide those kinds of fee waivers to groups in the city who otherwise probably wouldn't be able to stage events, worthwhile events in our city. This is revenue we never had before. This is revenue that we really don't have to do any work to achieve. And again, it sounds like the deal that was negotiated brings into the city significant revenue to allow us to continue to do other things without cutting services in other parts of the city. So I'm going to vote for this, and I think it's the right thing for us to do right now.
Our last speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment. I'm not convinced it's a good business deal. I'm glad Ms. Han agrees it would be better to be five years. You should go back and say five years. And three, I'm not going to regret my vote. I'm voting no.
All right. That is our last speaker. So we have the item before us. So please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
That is approved. Thank you. For the closed session item, folks, it's a reject. We don't need to go into closed session unless anybody needs to ask anything about it. If not, I would put it before us then. Okay. So I will move the rejection recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee. Please open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. I believe we have a special one before us. Mr. City Attorney on the findings, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since posting of today's agenda, the city has learned that the state legislature is considering taking 5% of CRA funds without necessary safeguards. Immediate action is required due to the status of the overdue state budget and the fact that the use of the Administrative Code Section 2.19 letter might not convey the city's position in a timely manner. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
All right. First, Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right. Now for the, the matter is before us. Does anyone wish to speak on that? Otherwise? Let me see. We have no cards on this?
Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas. Sounds like.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I know firsthand how slow and how quickly these negotiations can go when it comes to the state budget, and due to the fact that the governor's proposal does include the taking of redevelopment funds, I just would like all of our support in order to send them the message in this motion that they should not do so.
All right. No other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. That, that marks the end of our agenda. Madam Clerk, for motions posted and referred?
Yes. Council has motions for posting and referral.
I think we have a special announcement from Council District 14. Before we do that, Mr. Labange, did you want to say something?
Did special one get passed as well, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it did.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Happy birthday to Mr. Councilmember Jose Huizar.
I hope we're not adjourning for anything. Hey, dear. Happy birthday to you. All right, hold staff.
Happy birthday, Mr. Huizar.
You've got a candle. Put another candle on your birthday cake.
Did you wish to say a few words about how happy you are that you're 40 years old now?
Thank you very much. I have mixed feelings. I'm happy that it's my birthday, but at the same time, it's the big 40, so, but I do feel younger, and I do feel blessed every day with the blessings God has given me, and especially with my young six-month-old boy. It makes me feel even younger because I have to run around and give him his bottle and everything else. But thanks to my wonderful staff for this. I really appreciate it. And thanks to all of you. Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Members, any other announcements? All right. Any, if we can please rise in a serious way for any adjourning motions. Miss, okay, we're going to do adjourning motions right now, and then if you could just hold that for a second. Any adjourning motions? Ms. Han?
Thank you. Council, colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of two people. One is Petri Gomez, a 38-year Wilmington resident who passed away at the age of 81. She was a longtime member and photographer for the Wilmington Senior Citizens Sunshine Club, and she was a member of the VFW and the Elder Senior Club. She is survived by five children, Susan, Diana, Danny, Robert, and Delia, 17 grandchildren, including the daughter of my schedule, Tina, who is named Ava, 15 great-grandchildren, and five sisters. Visitation will be held at McNerney's Mortuary in Wilmington on Friday from 5:00 to 9:00. The funeral services will be held on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Saint Peter's and Paul Catholic Church in Wilmington. I'd also like to adjourn today in memory of Elmer Wilson Grimes, a 53-year resident of the Rolling Hills Estates who passed away on Labor Day at the age of 95. Known to many as Farmer G., he toiled for years as a farmer in Rolling Hills Estates and was known as a living piece of history and one of the last links to farming in the area. He grew up on a farm near Washington, D.C. He later met his wife, Sarah Ruth, and together, after she got an opportunity to teach at Pepperdine, they moved to Los Angeles. He became a high school teacher, taught at Pepperdine, and as well as won a Silver Star in World War II. He offered his farming expertise to his students, local Boy Scouts, 4-H Clubs, Palesfertis Horsemen's Association, and many others. There were many field trips that would go to Rolling Hills Estates and visit this farm, and it was his goal to teach all children and adults that food did not come from a grocery store, but actually came from the land. He was president of the Palesfertis Drive North Homeowners Association for 46 years and was honored as the oldest active resident of the city in 2002, and received the outstanding Active Older American Award from the county in 2003. He and Sarah Ruth were a major part of the Rolling Hills Estates 50th Anniversary Celebration, and he survived by his wife of 66 years, Sarah Ruth, his sons Dale and Bruce, his daughters Sunshine and Ellen, four grandchildren, five great-grandchildren. This was a very close family to our family. I grew up with his kids. We all went to church together. I went to many summer Bible camps with Ellen, and this was a great family. They continued to go to church with my mom every Sunday until he got too ill to go. So we will miss Farmer G., Elmer Grimes. He left a great legacy and a great heritage to all those on the peninsula.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Any other adjourning motions? All right. Well, with that, Madam Clerk, would you please, Mr. Alarcon, I'm sorry.
I have an announcement.
Okay. Mr. Alarcon has an adjourning motion. If you can just hold on.
I have an announcement.
Oh, you have an announcement? Okay, great.
Members, this was just handed to me. Actually, I believe this is in Wendy Gruel's district as well, but I want to announce that tonight at 6 o'clock, there will be an orientation for, in recognition of Latino Heritage Month, there will be an event to learn how to play instruments and how to dance, sponsored by Disney, the mayor, and Tiya Chucha Centro Cultural in Lakeview Terrace. The music and dance courses available will include Danza Azteca and Navatul Song, Kapoeira, San Orocho, and Guitar 1 and 2, and Navatlaka music. I'm sure everybody knows what that is, but if you don't, this is an opportunity to understand the Aztec roots. And again, the orientation is at 6:00 p.m. tonight at 10258 Foothill Boulevard in Lakeview Terrace, and that's Tiya Chucha Centro Cultural.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, and the birthday celebration can begin in earnest.